I'd like to call Vival and give you the whole workshop from May sixth to two thousand twenty five to order at five thirty P M. First up on the agenda this evening is good of the order. I was just in a preface, I'll turn it over to the councilman moment, but I know councilman over now, though you weren't not able to make the special meeting that the mayor also wasn't there sort of even though it's captured in the minutes kind of at a high level, just kind of what we talked about a little bit. We thought it would be a good opportunity for the council to get together, sort of discuss council procedure, process, a little bit around some of the forum and one of the outputs of that. The meeting at minutes actually captured the majority of what we talked about, but it was really the council sort of taking responsibility for policing itself as body and. One of the the tools that came out of that is something that councilwoman McHenry found online, but was, you know, in the moment when. He the moment it's often difficult sometimes to to sort of. Process the procedures associated with rules of order. So one of the outputs is everyone has a green sheet, which has essentially just a relatively basic script for following rules of order. So a council member calls a world a point of order. There the script that you can follow to sort of keep you on track. Similarly, any member of the council, as we discussed, can be called a point of order in terms of another member of the body and was mayor. So again. I think it was really, it was great conversation, sort of a discussion in terms of our responsibilities internally and then how we. Tools that are available to us specifically Robert rules of order to kind of get us back on track from things. So that. But appreciate the time. The other only other thing I want to mention tonight is the clerk and I had a email exchange late today. I think we aligned on May twenty fourth. This is the day of retreat. We had a specified time. I think we locked on eight A M to twelve P M with some breaks, which gave us a good three and a half hours to discuss, but that also gives you a little advance notice in terms of. Organizing your own calendar. So with that, are there other council members that have any good of the order for this evening? Councilmember that?
Yeah, I submitted that question and being back really within the A D U since we kind of. That opposition went a little alive. And so I worked on that the last few weeks and submitted it and. Most of the questions are fairly straightforward. There is one question. I'm trying to get perspective on the difference between the twenty four foot E height and if you use that as the E height. So I. There were several examples of A D Us around town that I was like, hey, like, what is this in practice? You know, how tall is this? Because sometimes. You know, when you see something, you know, you don't realize how tall it is. And so I think it would be helpful for me to get a perspective of being able to see an actual A D U in the community and know how tall it is. And how the different height restrictions may or may not allow certain things. So there were four that I asked and and there were ones that had been permitted by the city. So I don't know. I I assume the city. Has the the plans for them. I'm not sure. Anyway.
Yeah, I know the the email with exchange or sort of the request was shared across the council. There was some obviously internal conversation between staff. There's the mayor, the only piece I put on there and the guidance. This is one of the things I think we're going to talk about. In a retreat in terms of just how we quantify and expectations around, but we don't have a lot of language today in the in the procedures documenting. I think the one piece that I'll have here and and I think where it got a little bit back and forth is really around sort of. A directed versus request. And I think if it's framed in the, you know, I need assistance, understanding heights and, you know, maybe you could do this. I think. It was an interpretation, right or wrongly, that it was the way it was scripted was more directed in terms of where we do these things. And that's, I think, where ultimately it's the city administrators. Decision to determine from a work allocation and and even the time allocation, how much and how challenging that is to find. So that's the one thing I would say is, you know, is a feature for these requests if we. And again, a lot of that is just common in terms of how we the apps versus the sort of request. And I think that's where it happens a little bit. Again, I'm getting back from vacation myself. So sort of just got caught up on the email. And and, you know, I don't know ultimately where that that ended up. The other is just obviously time and I saw you clarify and sort of later nail that it wasn't this particular council meeting. It was the meeting on the twentieth. So there was, you know, it was within the advanced notice timelines for making that request. But that's the only comment I'll make. I'll turn it over to city administration just had.
Yes, so city team discussed the request. I will have Director Thomas speak to it, but we don't want to get ahead of the planning commission. So the planning commission is having a public hearing next week. We want to make sure that they're able to do their work within their role. Some of those issues will be discussed at planning commission. We also, because the questions touch on things that could potentially conflict with state law, we want to make sure that. Before the city engages in a lot of work in answering questions, we know whether or not even if we could get to an answer, whether the answer is permitted or not. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Thomas.
I think, are we supposed to go up there? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Thank, sorry. Thank you. My first time saying back here. I'm excited. So we are getting ready to go to hearing and one of the exhibits that's in the hearing document is actually analysis of existing roof height and E height. For the unit that we still have documents for. So under previous. Records law, we had to keep them for six months. Now we keep them for six years. So we were able to go back and find about five. And so we have that within the exhibit along with a couple of other items that I think will be helpful for them and questions you asked.
Is that in the planning commission packet?
It'll be in the planning commission packet this week. And it will be in the council packet. For the meeting after that. But the next step is for planning commission to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to city council.
And the other before I sort of. Councilmember now.
Yeah, so there was another part in there where I said, I think I would need staff assistance to to write formal language. And if if council was interested in it, it was just that. I kind of tried to write what I was trying to get at, and I don't know the technical way to write it. So I wasn't saying I want this amendment to be this exact language. I was trying to get to a concept. And I don't write code. And so anyway, that was the other part that I would need staff help. If this is something that council was amenable to, I don't know how to write.
And I hope the only other thing I have there is I think city ministry indicated we would follow a similar process. I think the last time where you collect the the feedback and then we walk through it as the council and there may be an opportunity in that. Discussion to clarify or or just fill the language. It turns out not to make sense for.
Yeah, because you don't want anyone to think that I thought I could write and edit and knew how to write code, but concept.
And so with that, second item is the review of the regular meeting agenda. I know there are a number of. Well, items on consent agenda and then both existing and new business, but any questions, concerns? And then we got the two closed session and detective session, but. Doesn't look like a, oh, no, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So seeing none boos us to the first discussion item for this evening, which is the request for a permit fee waiver. Jennifer Paddock, Chief Executive Officer, Freddie Chris of Diamonds, and then John Hall, the building committee chairperson. But maybe I had that backwards, but. You are.
You all there?
Yeah, come up to the.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. We will be brief, but I'm Jennifer Paddock, CEO of Acres of Diamonds. I've met a lot of you. So thanks for having us tonight. I'm here tonight with Ed Roberts, who's on our board, John Hall, who is the building committee chair, and Pam Warnick, who is capital campaign projects manager. So they're here to support this. So if I haven't met you, my name is Jen Paddock. I have actually been at Acres of Diamonds now for eleven years, which is crazy. That's gone fast. But Acres has been in the valley for over thirty years. We just celebrated our thirty year anniversary, serving moms and kids who are experiencing homelessness. And we're really happy to be here. We were founded by a dairy farmer's daughter from the valley, if you don't know that. I actually didn't know that until about five years into my tenure, but she was a dairy farmer's daughter. But very much grew out of this community. We are now a growing employer in Duval. And we're hoping to continue to see our employees live and thrive here in this community. Right now, we we employ over thirty folks, and that will certainly get bigger when we have this next project and daycare completed. And one of the things that has been true of Acres of Diamonds for the entire time I've been here and twenty years before is the strong support of the community. And that continues as most of you have experienced and you've done it yourself as well. So the community comes in, they do, we people like to hire our folks. So we get jobs for our families. That entry level job in particular is really important. We get a lot of donations and clothes and household items and financial support, budget coaches, kids, volunteers. It's amazing how the community comes around the families and that's really important for these women who are beginning to see themselves as important members of a community. And so you guys and your community do a great job of sort of reframing that for them. We have grown from sort of the shelter model to a high touch, more therapeutic model over time. And so we sort of learned that the original thing that Pearl Tama, our founder did, is really the best thing Acres has, which is that community home. It's very relational. There's a lot of experience as well as a large body of work in the homeless world that shows that long term success rates, in particular for women. Are correlated with highly relational interventions that include counseling, community support, et cetera. So the dairy farmer's daughter had it right thirty years ago, which I think is pretty cool. And right now, our biggest gap is daycare. That's probably something you guys, I would assume, would be somewhat familiar with. People always ask, have your women pay for daycare? Well, they they rely on some vouchers, some subsidies from the state. And there is not a daycare in Duval or Carnation that accepts that right now. And and I can understand why. It's not a viable business practice, pretty much. The amount that you get paid has gone up a bit, but the daycare that we're opening will be a trauma informed daycare. So that means those kids need more help, not less. So if you're trying to run a business, that's not, that sometimes is just a nonstarter. So we're really excited to, as part of this new project, have a daycare that will be all just only accepting the vouchers and subsidies and be able to serve our families. Except we're jazzed about that. So a couple more comments and then I'll hand it over to John. He's going to have the most interesting part in terms of our growth plans, but most of you may remember, I've been here before. We have been talking about growth for a long time and we were finally able to complete the Pearl Tad in the house. And we named it in honor of our founder and some of you in there. Thank you very much for being there for the ribbon cutting. That's going really well. Although I will say, as we've gone up in capacity, we're really feeling that daycare need. So we're jazzed about this project getting done. So now what we were going to do has changed over time, but we are in the final phase of this project. It's going to be twenty four more families that we can serve in addition to the ten in the house. The daycare will serve sixty kids and it will be trauma informed, which is exciting. We will, the apartments will disappear and and it will be, as you see up there, and John will tell you a bit more, just a touch on where we're at in the project, because the thing we're asking you to consider tonight is helping us sort of get rolling. We've raised four of the seven million in funds that we need to proceed with the project and we actually have our, it's a campus up for sale, goes up for sale after Mother's Day. And it's two parcels we should, that could get us to the seven or certainly will get us close. So we're sort of getting there. And we really love the idea of being able to talk about how the city has supported us and you've supported us regardless of how you vote on this. But but this would be really cool and it would help us be more economical. You know, donors always ask, is the city on board? And you're on board no matter what, but but our request would be really helpful. So that's all my thoughts. I'm grateful for your years of support. I, like I said, I've been here eleven years. I told the board I have nine more for sure. I mean, I can't picture, but I'm planning to retire from acres. I'm having a great time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for having us. And I know Jen mentioned that it's a big part of you guys. I was in front of you guys once before, so I probably I recognize some, but well, in all, all so. Quickly, my, introduce myself. I'm John Hall, Billy, who made the chair. And I I was introduced to Acres of Diamonds by Ed Rogers, who's sitting over there. A few months back in November of twenty two, and then I came and visited their existing facility and it just touched me in a way that I just had to get involved. The beauty of that was that I had just retired. Two years earlier, and so I had time on my hands. And I've always wanted to be able to give back something. And this was one that really, really struck me. So my role specifically is the building committee chair. So I'm kind of one of the people, kind of the lead person that's the one stop shop for the city staff. If they need something. I'm their guy. And. And we have a good community, a committee behind us. Ed is a is a real estate developer, so he knows that side of the business. I was a contractor for forty years with Boucher and Associates out of Bellevue. Which is a midsize general contractor. I was their senior project manager for over forty years. And so I'm not that I know everything about construction, because nobody knows everything about construction, right? And but what I do know is I do know the. The language. I know a lot of what what, when somebody says something about a builder, about a site or about a material. I kind of know, I can figure it out. And so I'm I'm hoping that that actually can help the staff move the project through efficiently, efficiently. The project itself, and I think we might have a site plan. There you go. So the plot, the site itself, the. Is on Kennedy Drive. The T shaped building on the left is the existing Pearl Tana home, which is the one that has eleven families in it. You'll see on the right hand side that long skinny kind of dash box. That's the existing apartment building. That would then be removed from the site so that we could build twenty one thousand feet of daylighted basement to over daylight basement plus two, so three stories, but you would only see. Doors from the east. The front of the building. And then all the adjacent site work, all the road improvements. The bottom floor, Jen mentioned the trauma informed daycare, the bottom floor in the daylight basement is one hundred thousand feet from informed daycare. And then. We would be adding an additional twenty four families to the total. So we have twenty four plus the eleven. And then on the far right. Where the old apartment building is, there's a full play area there. And then we're actually enhancing the one between the buildings. Where it's got kind of like goofy little shaped wall next to the T shaped building. So there's that another play area kind of going into the, for the older kids. Because they, we found that they didn't really have a place with play area, the equipment, it doesn't really work for them. So we wanted a place where they could, they could hang out and have stuff to do. So really excited about the project right now, so that you know where we're at with the project timeline. We've recently submitted for the master use permit. We are still in design work with our effect, doing a lot of the interior work. Again, as you can imagine, you revisit a lot of the decisions that you've made. The site plan, if the staff approves it. Then the site plan is where we would like to be. The inside is where things are kind of moving around, but but settling in pretty good. And we're getting pretty close. And we're anticipating kind of, kind of or anticipating making application for building permit in around six months from now. And we would be ready to do that. We realize that there's a risk involved in that in some cases, but we want to try to keep this process moving as best we can. Now, what kind of way, what kind of that fine tuning of the interior to kind of get it going where it wants to be. So that's kind of where we're at. If anybody has any questions about the project. Have you got more to answer?
Questions from council? By councilwoman Apple.
So that you could take that twenty four more families. What is the big one size that will be accommodated?
It will be anywhere from a mom plus one to a mom plus three. Yeah. And we've accommodated different sized living units within the building, like the end units are a lot larger than say the middle units. And then interior of the building is more, has more community living space and a community kitchen. So there'll be six, six or eight. Actual kitchen units, like that stove and a dishwasher and a sink and place for kids to hang out that are an eye shot of mom while she's doing her cooking and they can participate in the cooking process with that thing would want. So. And that kitchen area then is adjacent to the dining area where we, I think, I think we've got to a point where we can get about half the number of families all into that same room all at once. So. So we're trying to create some community also in in the dining room.
Thank you very much. So the second discussion, discussion item of the evening is a finance report for fiscal year twenty twenty four, and that's going to be Director of Finance at that. And Brian Randall, the finance manager.
Well, they're pulling that up. I'm Beth Meepin. My name's Director. And I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce our new finance manager, Brian Deena. This is Brian Randall. He is our new finance manager. He comes with a lot of great experience. He is fitting wonderfully in the role and he's doing really great work. And this position is a tremendous supportive and finding director position. So we are looking at our Q four twenty twenty four. So this is an overall. Report. This is a preliminary finance report. All of our funds have been internally refiled by the finance team, but have not been formally audited by the date yet. Our twenty twenty four state audit should take place later this fall. Okay, so what we're looking at right here is total twenty twenty four revenue compared to budget for all of our funds. With the hundred percent of the year completed in total, twenty twenty four brought in ninety two point six percent of our what we budgeted for revenue. That feels good. Also want to mention that our total investment interest income, although it's not on the website here, for all of our funds for twenty twenty four was one point seven million, which is up from our twenty three total of one point three million. So that also feels good. So as we look at expenditures for twenty twenty four compared to budget, with the other than the year complete in total twenty four, we spent eighty two point five percent of what we budgeted for expenditure. So that also feels good. My next slide. So we're going to roll into our general fund revenue. So general fund, largest force of revenue, which is our property tax, second largest is sales tax, and third largest is utility tax. So within total, general fund tax revenue twenty four increased five percent over twenty three. Water it feels okay. It looks like that to look better, but all good. So our lighting and permitting revenue and charges for goods and services in the general fund did decrease due to the decrease in permitting activity. Intergovernment revenue, can you go back a bit? So the intergovernment revenue line, that is state and federal grants. So revenue, revenues often fluctuate. You're based on the grants awarded. Expenses usually match grant, but sometimes expenses can carry over year to year. Miscellaneous revenues represented on this line are our investment interest and room rental income, just for clarity. I also want to point out that the other revenue line, that includes our transfer. So we transferred funds from strategic and ARPA. Into the general fund to cover expenses. And so that increase is just that increase from twenty three, twenty four is just the increase in the amount of expenses that we ran through the general fund that we transferred funds into cover. Okay, I can. So general fund expenditures, of course, our biggest expenditure is salary and benefits. And of course vacancies or lack of vacancies can influence our salary expenses. And I also want to note that benefit line here would include vacation or sick buyout. And those can vary from year to year. Our professional services for twenty four, as you're looking at that compared to twenty three. So twenty twenty four included an increase in our comp plan expenses. Our insurance costs, we had audit fees last year. We have our police service, our police chief has a professional services contract. And we also had some contracted temporary finance and clerk staff. Okay, next slide. So here we have our building and permitting revenue. So of course, after a spike in twenty twenty three, building and permitting revenue is decreasing as we see a decline in building activity for twenty four. And of course, as you know, school impact fees are received and then dispersed. So that revenue expense washes when you're looking at those lines. So the building and permitting balance at the end of twenty twenty four was three point nine million. So increased revenue from prior years provide a strong fund balance to provide continued support for our work needing to be completed in the few years ahead. Next slide. So building and permitting expenditures, and as you look at that, you can see the impact fees, those are received and dispersed, and so those do wash. The other expenses for this fund show a small increase for twenty twenty four as expected. Next slide. So our utility operating funds for water, sewer, storm, they do remain healthy with revenue income for twenty four, consistent with previous years, and revenues are exceeding expenditures for twenty four. Next slide. So our utility general facility charges are received into our utility C I P funds. So twenty twenty four revenue show a decrease from twenty twenty three due to a building activity, but funds remain healthy. So real estate excise tax. So REIT is levied upon the sale of real estate. And it saw a bit of a decrease in revenue for twenty two and twenty three, but twenty four is showing an increase in units sold, increase in average sale and an increase in average REIT, which brings an increase in twenty twenty four revenue. And our REIT funds are used to support capital projects. Next slide. Here we have our impact fees. We're seeing a steady increase in park and street impact fees, which are received into our park and street C I P fund or capital C I P funds and support our capital projects. Next slide. So transportation benefit district, the city receives point two of a cent of sales tax into our transportation benefit district fund for street capital improvement projects. We experienced an increase in twenty twenty four revenue totaling. Four hundred and, okay, yeah, because we don't show the total on here. So I just did a little math. We're going to fix this slide going forward. So total revenues for twenty twenty four was, were four hundred and fifty two thousand compared to twenty three, which was just four hundred and five thousand. Okay, next slide. So we have our sales tax trend here. So it shows our sales tax revenue to the city, and this does include sales tax from construction. So twenty twenty four total tax revenue increased two hundred and sixteen thousand over twenty twenty three revenue. That feels good. Sales tax revenue has steadily increased over the years and we estimate the growth to continue, but sales tax can be somewhat volatile. So. Sales tax can be somewhat volatile, so. Okay, so here we have, it's a lot of information. Um, but our overall fund balances remain healthy at the end of our twenty three twenty four biennium. Um, and our total revenues are more than our total expenditures. Um, I think we all focus on that top line, um which is the. And have been and continues to be a focus of concern. So with twenty total twenty twenty four revenue of fourteen point seven million. In our general fund, um and expenses at fifteen to fifteen point two million. We actually use a little over half a million dollars in cash. Um, to complete our twenty three and twenty four budget, but we had originally budgeted close to one million. And cash to be used, so that feels a little good. Um, we have a history of being conservative with our revenue budgets and more generous with our expense budgets compared to what happens with our actuals. Um, we see, we're seeing this in twenty twenty four. Um, the revenue we received in the general fund. For twenty three twenty four was less than what was originally budgeted by about a half a million dollars, but actual expenses paid. Were less than what we budgeted by just over one million. So it's important to keep this in mind as we look at our twenty five twenty six biennial budget. Um, you know, that budget was built to the best of our ability based on knowledge that we had passed off last summer, really. Um, the budget plan for twenty five twenty six, looking at the budget of revenue and spend is to use one point nine million in cash. But as we work through the twenty five twenty six year, we will do our best, as we always have done, to increase our revenue when possible. To reduce our spend to minimize cash burden on the general fund. So we will keep a close watch on financial activity and ensure timely financial reports to the council as we move forward into the new biennium. I also want to remind everyone of our online interactive budget book for the twenty five twenty six biennial budget. Um, so if you haven't seen it, um there is a link on the city's website. Um, a lot of information and overview of the city, information on our budget process, our staff. Our departments and funds, along with details of our twenty five twenty six biennial budget. Questions?
Questions, Councilor?
This is a really great presentation, and it is something that I was not seeing on here and um from the uh the. Version in the packet.
Oh.
And I know it's been kind of a frustration about how the prior year look back always. Loop to the next line, and it was really hard to get the formatting, and it looks like that. Um, like the the prior year two thousand twenty three comparison for all the pages is missing now, because like I said, it used to live around. I think we create another line.
Um, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but I can do some research.
Yeah, so on all of the um. Uh, the report uh that are in here, they don't, when you showed it up here in your presentation, it shows. The total from two thousand twenty three, you compared to twenty four.
Okay.
And that column is missing.
In the twenty twenty four quarterly report that we have.
In the report in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah, and it used to um. Around because it there wasn't for it, and it made the formatting really bizarre, and I think I finally just got it removed.
Yeah, I was.
Compromising. Anyway.
I mean, that is a template that, you know, got copied, and so we're, we're happy to kind of put. Twenty four behind us. Um, I'm absolutely, I'm I'm welcome to share any information that you want on that. I will say moving forward. When you look at the new um like quarter one.
Yeah.
For the new biennium, you will see a comparison to twenty three. We actually compare year to date twenty four to year to date twenty three.
So there are always will be a look.
So it will always be a little back.
Oh, good.
At that sweet in time.
Okay, yeah, because it was, um, anyway, that's wonderful. Like, trying to get numbers in perspective is how numbers make sense and.
Yeah, always looking back to the prior year. Like, you know, where you are and kind of gauge.
Yeah.
How gauge.
Yeah, okay, so the fact that it's missing in the quarterly report of the end year one that's in here, going forward, it'll be back.
It, yes, it is.
Yeah, that is wonderful here.
Better questions from the textbook? Comments? Remember that one?
One more. Um, on the sales tax, uh, the bar chart. Um, I don't know if you could get that one back on. Um, it's about, I don't know. There we go. Um, it's impossible because it does include construction, and since construction is quite volatile. And, you know, a portion of it, at least of kind of one time money, you know, once construction rises. One thing that is information that would help me would be if we could in the bar, if it can be like a staff bar. Where it would differentiate between non-construction and construction, so you can kind of see. The last year and this year, the bar chart and say, oh, well, the reason the sales tax is down is because, well, construction is down. You know what I mean? Just, I think that would be extremely helpful.
That information is in the quarterly report, in the detailed numbers. Um, yeah, we'll see what we can do about getting that into the bar chart.
Yeah, because if overtime is interesting to see, like the big jump in twenty one, a lot of it is construction, other reasons too, but yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think uh the only comment I'll make is, you know, but jumping between the sort of this one versus the orders off, there's, I think you mentioned some of the. Totals that you'd include. I think sometimes, but in the uh the report itself, you had the commentary, so I think it's linking, which. Little bit was what you alluded to, linking the visuals with the with the notes, and it's it's great that we review the packet, obviously, then we get the presentation. Um, but yeah, appreciate the work that went into this, the sort of look back. Um, lot, lot more detail and and the way that you did the summarization at the top is super helpful, so appreciate that.
And I just wanted to add, at this point, uh Beth and Laura are going to head out. Um, to go to the National or to the Labor Relations Institute, Department of the W C, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Now. And so with that, bring those to our quarter board. Well, third discussion item of the evening, which is the King's County Park Levy. Uh, there's Warren uh Inez uh Director of King County.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me okay? Um, well, um, thanks for the opportunity to spend this time with you all. Really appreciate it. Uh, morning minutes. Um, and I have um the honor of being the Director of King County Parks and Recreation. Um, and um I believe um part of your materials may have included a couple of things that I may reference. Um, so uh I'm not sure if some of those can be shown, otherwise I can have a presentation that I can present as well to reference. Um, so you tell me logistically what's easier to do.
And John, we have it in the packet. That kind of thing is to present it side by side and reference the slides. They're not all all slides I know, but there is a number of materials as as you alluded to in our packet. Um.
We can do whichever, Mr. Jimenez, if you want to share your screen, by all means, open it.
Sure.
Or we can do it by you as well.
Um, yeah, why don't we should go ahead and put up, pull up the the materials, I mean, in particular. Um, we can do the PowerPoint presentation that we think they sent along, I can sort of speak to that if that's okay. Great, thanks for that. Appreciate that. Um, and I'll I'll reference um this PowerPoint presentation, but at the same time. I'll point into one of the things that we handed out was um more like a fact sheet. So I think it's a couple of pages. Um, that's the summary version uh of the levy, um that was passed by King County Council, referred to the ballot, the August fifth. Um, so that's also a up there, part of your pocket, part of your packet. Um, and then this presentation um is also included. Um, if you were to do the search um on King County website for parks levy, um you also will see. A website that hosts all of this insane information, so I mean, we can send that one to you too. Uh, following tonight's meeting, but again, appreciate the time uh to talk about um what's on the August fifth ballot. Um, so we can go ahead and go into the next slide. And talk about um what this levy renewal is designed to do. Um, really working across three fronts. Uh, one is to maintain. Uh, the system um across King County, uh enhance the system. Through investments uh through this levy, as well as connect uh across the system. So uh this this presentation will get into more details about um what this looks like together. Let's go to the next slide. And this is just a snapshot uh of the parks levy and what was referred. Uh, and so I want to want to talk about this in more detail, but I want to sort of stay on this slide. And provide a little bit of the history and context how we've gotten to this point. Um, so we're currently in a six-year levy, uh runs through at the end of twenty twenty five. That's a six-year uh property tax manager, uh that was uh voted in August twenty nineteen. Um, and uh parks levy is provides eighty five percent uh for funding uh for the King County system. And really last year, we ramped up, um are planning for this levy, that what you're seeing here tonight. Um, and that process included um several different things, including reaching out to the community, through the engagement, through efforts that we did. Um, um, we also have an advisory committee that provided recommendations, also factored in. The community engagement that we did last year as well. And then that was recommendations were provided to the department. Um, during that community engagement process, um we uh did several different surveys, we did focus groups. Uh, and through that, we have the reach, um more than forty eight hundred folks participated in that. The various strategies that we did outreach to um across all of the different uh King County districts. Um, so if you were to look at that information, it was pretty evenly split across the nine districts in terms of who participated, who engaged. Um, and that really gave us some really good baseline information about some of the needs that the community is seeing. Um, I think that there are two uh two themes coming out of that. Um, one was kind of taking care of the system that we have between. Um, as well as um um access to the parks in areas, so. Um, wanted to sort of provide that, some of that planning that led to ultimately. An executive proposed, and then now what um came um through the council consideration process of what now is being referred. Here to the ballot here tonight. Um, and so what is been referred to the ballot is a labor renewal rate of twenty three point two nine cents for. Uh, every thousand dollars of assessed value. Um, what a homeowner would pay um based on a median value, coal value of eight hundred and forty four thousand. Um, would be sixteen dollars and thirty cents per month per household. Um, if you were to compare that to what the current household is paying. Uh, with the current levy, um that is uh two dollars and fifty cents more. Uh, in comparison to the current levy rate. So we have some other um notes here, other data points here, um about fifty four cents per day or eight, eight more than the current levy. Um, and it goes to the kind of these three areas, um with the different colored pie charts and the the follow-up PowerPoint slides, giving them more detail. Uh, in each of these areas, but really I'm going to uh clean, safe and and open some to the maintenance part about about a third goes to that. Um, the operations funding that we need to take care of the system. Um, it goes to increasing access uh to things that um that you all are aware of, so that would include things like. Um, a continuation of several of our grant programs. It includes the pass-through funding. Uh, to cities and towns and and park districts, uh it includes fundings to. Uh, other partners, uh like the zoo and a few other uh partners, uh includes uh doing some repair and renovation. As well as some new park developments, so about forty seven percent uh goes to that. And then growing and connecting about nineteen percent, um that includes um improving and and connecting. And expanding the regional trail system, as well as some investments in climate resiliency and stewardship. Um, in total, uh about twenty five percent of the levy goes directly to cities, towns, park districts and partners. Um, and over the six-year measure, so this this is a, this is would be another six-year. Um, parts levy, uh which would run to twenty thirty one, uh it generate about one point four five billion, about to be cool. All right, um and then we'll go to the next slide here. And talk a little bit about um an attachment, actually, that's part of the legislation, again, that you'll see on the website. Includes something called an allocation plan. And if you were to go to that allocation plan, you'll see sort of the investment levels in each one of these bulletins items that you see here. On this list. So um this PowerPoint uh presentation is sort of lined up with that allocation plan. That way people can kind of see, make those comparisons uh back to the legislation. Um, so we'll touch on each of these bulleted items um as we work through the presentation. Uh, the first one being uh aquatic facilities, which is covered by the mix. Um, in total, um this is sixty eight million dollars um investing in the. King County Aquarium in Federal Way, and then um. Uh, a grant program, a continuation of an existing grant program focused on aquatics, as well as some specific allocations. Um, that's that would go towards specific projects for uh these jurisdictions that are listed here. But the Aquatic Grant Program is something that was started in this levy, um and would continue on in the next levy if approved by the voters. Go to the next slide. Um, and um in in a new focus area, um for this next levy includes balls and uh ball fields and sports ports. Um, so things like investing in um synthetic turf field conversions. Uh, and a few specific projects, um rehabilitation to some existing King County um ball fields. Um, as well as turf replacements, and then a new grant program. Uh, around ball field preservation and access grants. Um, about thirteen point five million dollars would go towards design build program. And new enhanced public recreational facilities on county and city own lands. So um that is a new grant program. Um, I'll also reference a couple of new grant programs that's come along with this levy if if the voters approve. Next slide. Um, uh talks about our grants and community partnership. Um, light item in the allocation plan includes. Uh, these three grant programs, uh community partnerships grant program. Um, healthy communities and the parks fund, which was formerly known as a targeted equity grant program. Um, as well as the Uppin Amateur Sports uh Grants. Um, this slide sort of talks about the um the goals of each one of these program areas. I'll note that the Healthy Communities and Parks Fund um is funded at thirty million dollars to increase access. Of that thirty million dollars, ten million dollars is specifically for for cities and towns. So, um, uh, for example, the city of Deval would be eligible to apply. Uh, for ten million dollars in that grant program, which is which is kind of the the unique aspect of a change, and that would come along with that with that grant. Go to the next slide. Uh, and then just touch on some of the other partnerships. Um, zoo in the aquarium is part of the existing levy, and that would carry forward also. The next levy, and then three uh new partners would include the waterfront park, Pacific Science Center, and. And the Memorial Stadium Project Rehab in Seattle. Next slide. Um, talks about um Parks Capital and Open Space Pass Through. Uh, just as a reminder, the current levy has a parks and open space grant program. Um, which uh folks have applied for, uh City of Deval. Uh, they've received a grant um as part of that program. Um, part of the the change uh for the next levy uh would be a direct pass-through. Uh, of that money in additions to the the other pass-through that I'll note here in a second. So this would be twenty five million dollars directed to cities and towns for capital. So this would be twenty-five million dollars directed to cities and towns for capital operations needs. Uh the amounts is is based on a formula and putting population and equity criteria. And uh it complements the the additional, the pass-through amounts in the next slide, so if you go into the next slide. Um it talks about the pass-throughs, which includes in this next levy, a hundred and nineteen million dollars. Um that would include direct allocations to cities, towns and parks districts. Which the 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 change in this would would include um park districts or three park districts could be funded. Uh through the next levy. Uh and the formula is based on what you see here, so seventy-five thousand per city and town. Uh you see the park district allocation. And then fifty thousand per year for each city or town with a population of more than four thousand. Um and then the remaining amount uh is split based on a formula, uh so sixty percent population and forty percent assessed value. So um just sort of wrote in a note about what that would mean, wait to for the city of Duval. Um over the next uh six years, uh it would be about one point two million dollars of pass-through and total pass-through amounts. Uh over the next levy, so to kind of give you that that detail there. Um how that compares with the current levy, I think the current levy you get approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand, so just to give you that comparison. All right, and we'll go to the uh next couple of slides here, I mentioned about um how um the park subsidy provides eighty-five percent uh of our funding. Um for King County um park system, which includes kind of the system here is the the same visual here of. Of uh a hundred and eighty-five miles of regional trails, several hundred parks. Open space, um backcountry trails, um includes our, this includes our responsibility. Go to the next slide here, which is talks about. Um in addition to providing that operations and maintenance funding. Uh a few focus areas around um funding for safety uh and security, asset management. Um uh lands stewardship encroachments uh program, continuation of used conservation program. Um as well as a park beautification program. Which is started um this year with COVID funding, connecting people that are looking for jobs, um would provide jobs and perks. And then um a new tribal indigenous historic interpretation program. Go to the next slide, and this is just demonstrates sort of the responsibility and how we're structured and delivering and maintaining the system. And you can see kind of different sections as well as the operations teams that we we have to take care of the system. As well as the programs. Go to the next slide. Um and touch on um. I had a climate resilience and conservation stewardship, um really uh talks, invest in a couple of different areas. Um including our acquisition program, uh the parks levy is a match uh to conservation's future tax, which can use for for art protection acquisition work. Um and as well as uh investments in climate resiliency through several different programs. Um stewardship of lands, um borrowing lands, doing some planning. Um the similar recent acquisitions, um investing in our fish patches program. Uh as well as um some environmental stewardships, um so we have some district maintenance, the facility needs. Um some natural resources planning and remediation. Go to the next slide. And um this would be investments in our regional um and other public trail systems, so a hundred and eighty-two million dollars. Would go to um these regional trails, um making those connections uh across the system. Uh from East Trail to like the sound uh to Seas Break as well as other regional trails. Um which is covered in the next slide. Um including uh these specific trails as well as um resources for furthering our planning work. Which includes the Green River Trail, Preston Stokwami Trail, uh as well as a few others. Go to the next slide. Uh this talks about the new park development improvements, which is um forty-five million. Um point forty-five point five million into uh these new park developments. Here including Skyway Community Center. Uh some projects um in uh East Federal Way, uh as well as in Kimmore, uh in Lake Forest Park. Move the next slide. Um and this is uh talks about the active recreation or repair. Um a lot of major maintenance of existing uh infrastructure. Uh is the focus uh of this as well as regional trail rehabilitation. Uh providing ADA access and accessibility uh in in the system. Uh as well as uh making investments in Marymore Park, uh as well as Sunset Park. I'm almost done here, um so thanks for your patience as I work through this. Um put in the next slide here and just just touches on the type of major maintenance uh that. We'd be investing in, um including playground rehabilitation. Um access to water, so dock rehabilitation, backcountry trails, rehabilitation. Um drains, infrastructure, um and some other projects, uh Des Moines, as well as Preston Mill uh park investment. And I think I mentioned that um this is now um on the August ballot. Um and so uh I mentioned earlier about where you can find more information that has the. The uh website address here that you can find more information. Um if you were to go on there, you you'd see this presentation. You would also see the fact sheet that was part of, I think, the information that we shared with you all. As well as um some um some maps uh on where investments uh would be at, as well as some history of their investments. Um you can also find the legislation um as well as um some of the uh as well as the attachments. Um so for example, the allocation plan I referenced in this presentation. All right, thank you for showing that, the slide deck, we appreciate it, um so happy to to take your questions.
Questions from council? That's my number, my counter.
Uh thank you for this presentation, it was really helpful, um there were a lot of grant funds, different programs, and I was just curious. Um if you are awarded a grant, does that make you um. Not disadvantaged for a different grant, are they all completely independent of each other? Or I'm just trying to figure out if people should try to go for what they can, or if they should strategize and prioritize, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, that's a really good question, um. I'd say it's it will it will work similarly to the existing grant programs where, you know, folks kind of go. Go after all of them, so I don't, I don't, they kind of really run really independently of one another, because each one of those grant programs. Has specific focus areas and goals attached to those, so I would really encourage. Uh the city to kind of pursue all those avenues, um uh knowing that, you know, um depending on the criteria. Uh you know, those those will um, you know, the competitiveness is side depending on, so. Um and then um the one thing I forgot to reference too is is there's also a climate um grant program, which is a council manic program. Uh which is five million dollars there, uh so uh council will be making those awards, so I I forgot to note that in the presentation.
Thank you.
Good questions. I'm going to do that one.
I think that's a really thorough presentation, yeah, um. One thing that uh Duval has struggled with a bit, um because we're a bit different than some of the other cities and that. Our city park, parks um are serving a much larger population and assessed value. Value that's outside of city limits, in the unincorporated areas. And for example, um if you look over in North Bend, Stokwami, Fall City. Um they have metropolitan park districts who are also getting funding. Um and that represents kind of a broader unincorporated area. And our unincorporated area assessed value and population are not being credited to anyone. And so our city, when you look at the allocations, we only get for the population that lives in our little. One square, or I can't remember, two square miles of Duval, even though if you look at our sport leagues. They're all based on basically Riverview School District and they all feed in and the primary turf field that they all use is Big Rock Ballpark. Which is what City of Duval pays for and just our little residents pay for. And so I think that it's a little bit of a struggle, um and I don't know, maybe um the formula is all set in stone. Um I'm not sure, I I I didn't see the formula in the um. In the ordinance, so I I'm not a hundred percent sure where that is, but I think that that is a bit of a struggle, um for me personally, I don't want to speak for the rest of council. But um but like I said, we provide service to a much wider population and a much wider uh assessed value. Um yet our city pass-through is based just on our. Uh city limits, and so I don't know, and I, and you know, we've tossed around, we start a parks, municipal parks district. That's very um intensive and honestly, the fighting of parks would most likely be inside City of Duval anyway, so. Anyway, just the thought of, is it possible, since we don't have a municipal parks district, that we could at least get credit for the broader unincorporated area that we serve? Um I don't know if you're the right person to advocate to, or, and like I said, I'm just speaking for myself, and I know we've talked about it. As um a council, just how do we financially serve such a broad population outside city limit? That we don't receive tax money or support from necessarily.
Well, I I'll I'll just share just like a thought or two, and maybe just sort of speak to some of the process on. How um the formula landed, um so yeah, since this, it's been referred and passed by a city council, by a by a county council. You know, sort of locked in in terms of the formula. But I also know, you know, there was, there was good, robust conversation, especially with the sound. Cities Association about where do you find that balance, right, between? Kind of maybe some of the point, some of the points that you're making, um a lot of discussion about um. Uh basing some of that formula on population versus assessed value. Uh you know, kind of how do you factor in um some of those bigger populations? And so there is a lot of discussion about that, um and finally it sort of landed where it landed, um you know, based on what what I shared in those slides. Um but but in terms of this next, in terms of this levy that's on the ballot. Uh that formula has been kind of set through the legislation that's been now will be in front of the voters. Um but you know, there's also those grant programs, which I would really encourage you to to look to uh as opportunity. To think about, you know, some of the projects uh that you're thinking about there in Duval. Um so um you know, as we're kind of standing up those grant programs and. And landing those details, uh we'd love to be able to share that information with you all. Um about, you know, what that looks like, um I know that our our team. Um has, especially through um some of the newer grant programs with this current levy. Really wanted to provide technical assistance to folks to, especially as they've gone through. Applying for several of those um grant rounds. Uh to try to sort of, you know, i- if if one wasn't successful in that. To try to really circle back with folks who applied for that, because it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work for you all to kind of apply for that. Um so we want to be able to sort of provide that feedback on how maybe you can strengthen your application the next time, so. Um we want to continue to work with you and others on on trying to, trying to find that sweet sweet spot, especially through our grant programs.
Other questions from council? Where I have a question before, um so I I sort of just want to acknowledge that I'm the pick representative on Sound City Association and I know you did. Sort of, we provided some high-level feedback, uh there was some discussion in the formula was adjusted to that reference that table. It sort of was above the line, below the line, you know, you changed it one place, it impacts other, so it I I think you were very much looking for. But compromise, um you know, one one of the challenges is not not specifically what council member now uh referenced, but you know, we are a. An island community, we're in the valley, we're not ambiguous to other jurisdictions, I know there is investments around targeted projects in Cardigan and and to what we go. Um I think one of the things that we struggle a little bit and and for. I'm kind of looking for a little bit of a sense of how, how this is fine, but you referenced, I know there was a portion around. Uh equity in underserved communities, you know, we have a King County Park, I think I referenced this in the pick meeting, that is not very functional, you know, we have an allocation plan that we don't. Really use, it's it's not level, it's it's a, so you know, when you do your. For matrix, it should have a facility, but it's not really a functional facility. And then similarly, the city's made a number of investments around. It's the county, you know, suggested and grants and other things, allocating. Or or acquiring additional land at Big Rock Park that we want to develop. Uh there's per, you know, conversion of sort of existing fields, so I think you referenced the the grant programs, which are great. Uh but I was curious to be touched on a little bit in terms of from a county perspective, how you're assessing sort of underserved and equity? Because I think one of the things we talked about in the pick committee was. Targeted regional projects for underserved communities, and also a lot of this investment is in sort of. You know, west side versus east side, or north versus south, or larger jurisdiction versus smaller, and I know that's a lot, but just at a high level, kind of. How we should think about equity and how we should approach. Whether it's grant process or other applications, sort of the underserved. Elements or even conversion of existing facilities to make them more functional for for our residents.
Well, I I appreciate the the question, and I remember you speaking to that uh a little bit, um. And so um, yeah, so so answering that question around equity, kind of some of this are driven by. What we're trying to achieve through some of these larger accounting initiatives, so I'll give you an example, like the um. Land conservation initiative, which is drives our acquisition work, um where we're giving that protection work. Um it's probably one of our more sophisticated approaches to equity, which includes. Things like where folks may not have access, it includes health data, uh that includes um. Uh other uh data around access that really drives targeted investments for the acquisition work. It really speaks to the type of match that we would, we that mayor may not be required. Uh when we're buying a parcel as an example. Um in uh in an opportunity zone, that's what we, how we're defining it through that land conservation initiative, these opportunity zones. Um that don't require a match, so it allows us to utilize um some other sources of funding, like the conservation's futures. Um funding to be able to do that acquisition one. Um some of that work with acquisitions um piece um definitely applies to how we approach to some of the investments. Um as we're thinking about the King County system and where we make those investments. Um but it also includes other things like population usage, uh demand, um those types of things, and so. Um you know, the, I think this levy, as you you were a part of, really talked about, sort of, how do you sort of balance all of those interests? Um and I think it, you know, kind of landed where it landed, especially on the pass-through final formula. Uh as well as um the shifting of of the grant program that that currently exists. Uh the Parks and Capital Open Space Program now has become a pass-through funding amount, um so. Um you know, some of that was kind of really up for discussion as we worked through. Uh really, where was uh where was the cities, where were the council at, um as they were reviewing. Uh the levy and how do you sort of balance all those needs, so. Um some of those equity considerations are part of the grant uh programs. Um but also some of those grant programs are primarily focused for cities and towns as well. Um so the um the healthy communities grant program is an example, right, where. Uh total amount is thirty million dollars, of which ten million dollars would be specifically for cities and towns that are eligible for that, so. Trying to sort of strike that balance uh to kind of get at these many needs that that exist across the system.
That's one of the good cloud, there was not one question, um. That's more than happy.
Thank you, House Member Mercer actually touched on it, and then you mentioned it as well. Um about, you know, potentially being underserved, and what is your definition of underserved, specifically when you look at. Healthy communities and parks, and that there was that ten million of the thirty million that would go directly to cities through that program. And you know, there's different. What I'm curious about is, would Duval be considered underserved, is that a grant that we would be eligible? what I'm curious about is would Dubal be considered underserved? Is that a grant that we would be eligible for? Just, um, you know, we don't have an active park um, that serves kind of the broader unincorporated um, or the city really, there isn't a King County Park um, available to us um, in close proximity. So would we be considered underserved? I mean, we don't want to apply for grants that, you know, that isn't intended for, but.
Yeah, I mean, by the pure nature of the demand for that existing program, right, that would sort of be, you know, would help determine the competitiveness of an application, right? Um, so, uh, for the uh, Healthy Communities uh, Fund, you know, to, yeah, of, of that ten million dollars, the city of Dubal would be eligible to apply for that grant program. Um, as well as um, the Ball Field Grant Program, which is new, new program as well. So, um, you know, some of the criteria that we have existing with the current grant programs, um, we carry over, but I also think that um, you know, as we're, as we're, as we're developing more of those details on the approaches of these, of these grant programs, um, we'd want to come back to you and, and share those details, um, here. Um, I know that um, you were successful, for example, I think it was a hundred thousand um, for um, one of your projects there at the City of Dubal, um, that received funding. So have you seen some success on that?
Oh, oh.
No, no, thank you.
Another question. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
No, but that will be this. Yeah, so uh, if uh, since we have one minute or fifteen, twenty minutes, we'll move the city ministry report into.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm the community watching, Cindy McNabb, city administrator. And I think this week we begin with our public works update. So, there's your director line, Jesse.
Uh, good evening, staff, council, mayor, anybody listening in, Steve and Shesky Public Works. Uh, let's see. Quick update on staffing, Assistant City Engineer position, first review uh, closed yesterday, so we're going over that. I think we've gotten it down to a few candidates for interviews. We're moving on that. Uh, engineering intern starts next week. He is a civil student out of Fall City. I believe he's finishing his junior year at WSU. And then we have summer helpers all lined up, starting two weekends and then going through the summer. Most of them are high school or college uh, students. Public Works Week is coming up, May eighteenth to the twenty-fourth. So the, the celebration begins on Monday, the nineteenth at the permit center. So we'll have an open house there. We'll have another open house ribbon cutting at the Colbert. We'll be offering wastewater treatment plant tours and a walk through the facility at the permit center. Um, along with the open house and ribbon cuttings Monday, Wednesday, we'll have the Touch a Truck event. That is Sarah and Rita putting that together with council or Administrator McNabb. I am just uh, an execute person of tasks. They don't pick colors or activities. We just deploy them. So, a couple of little stickers that were made there include the trolls. That's a Rita and Benny thing. So they're handing out little stickers. We'll have hard ass, we'll have uh, construction equipment down in Depot Park, the lower loop. And the upper loops will be closed. Participate, participating agencies will be Dubal Police, Dubal Public Works, uh, East Side Fire and Rescue with Fire forty-five, uh, possibly Waste Management and Purdue Sun Energy. That's going to go from two to five. And there will be shave ice. Anything to add to that, Ms. McNabb?
Okay, so we might have uh, King County Search and Rescue as well and we, we bring on their dogs. So hoping they take us. Um, but yes, we're very excited to, I'm going to amend the ribbon cutting. So eleven thirty is not at the permit center, it's at Colbert.
Oh, flip flop?
Yeah.
Sure.
At the um, Colbert.
Third Avenue.
Third, third.
Thank you.
And then the tours of the wastewater treatment plant and then tour the permit center is at one. With ribbon cutting there.
Next slide. Uh, Judd Park Sunshade, so that will be closed. We will make some announcements to the community beginning the same week, uh, May nineteenth. So that gets its shade sales roof system uh, color for the fabric is a silver blue to kind of match the surrounding area and houses and then brown uh, vertical posts. Currently, the, the park has green posts, so a little differentiation, but yet green and brown are parks colors. Um, other things, miscellaneously flower pots, materials are delivered to the high school from soils and fertilizer. Liz at Ace has flowers coming this week and we will be delivering the pots Monday morning for their, their creation and then they'll harden them off up there in the greenhouses and put them up the week of uh, prior to Dubal Days. Water system RFPs out, uh, interior and exterior tank cleaning and painting slash coating. Uh, pump review in addition to the fourth pump, as well as maybe replacing a pump. And then mixing of the water. We have a common fill and drain in our two point two million gallon water tank, which is not the greatest water quality. So we, we do a lot of management. So we're putting in some systems to help avoid uh, kind of a lot of management. And then the automated meter reading system is still in design. We're still working on vertical antennas, which don't exist a lot in town. So we're working with PSC on some spaces for that. Um, and I believe your city engineer just relayed tomorrow.
The twelfth.
The twelfth is the first day of the second uh, Microsoft commuter bus that will be starting its run in the uh, Toll Brothers South End off of Third and Big Rock. So she's been working with them. They're very excited on the ease of uh, working with us as well as our support. So, uh, I think that's just a reflection of everybody's hopes to get more buses out here. And I believe, I think I had one more thing I didn't write down, but forgot about it. Ms. McNabb, we just talked about it before we came here. Oh, we did. We, we are having to replace the HVAC system at the Wasteful Treatment Plant Lab that died. It was older than half the employees in the facility. Um, so we had three quotes. I think the low was about eighteen thousand five hundred. So that's heat and cool, because it is a lab that has to maintain appropriate temperatures. And yeah, done again installed, no budget. Management needed.
Well, and I would say I recommend everyone to drop by and see the lab because not only is it a lap, but it's also an indoor terrarium potentially.
The abandoned plant safe haven.
Yeah.
The Dubal drop off.
They have revived and cured many a plant in there. Um, it is, it's pretty funny.
Nearly hundred percent success rate in revitalizing plants. Very fertile. Good fertilizer. Yeah. Any questions for Public Works? Thank you.
Okay, uh, next slide, I will fill in for Director Thomas with five. Um, the first is just all of the public hearings that are coming up and different policy work. So the ADU public hearings are to May fourteenth, May twentieth. Um, Sign Code Public Hearings are May twentieth and May twenty-eighth. So you'll see council agendas, um, which we kind of highlighted back in January are going to be dominated quite a bit, quite a bit by comprehensive plan land use and land use policy work in the coming year. Uh, the comprehensive plan, public hearings, May twenty-eighth and from third, we hope that we get the content finalized on, at the end of June. Parking policy, that update, um, is going to be worked on May through September to try to clean that up and have that finalized by the end of, or beginning of fall. Land use entitlement procedures, these are formerly known as the permit processing. We've come to council once just to generally talk about that program and all the update. Uh, we have started that work in earnest in June and that'll run through September. The sensitive area regulations, uh, the RFP is being worked on right now. Those will go out, Miami's going to work on that July through December and then unit lots subdivision and co-housing. Also a regulatory requirement will be doing that September through December. So, uh, small and mighty team doing probably two years worth of work in a single year, so I'll have to get done with that stuff. Excellent. And then there are a couple of other things that have come up. Apologies, this is kind of small. Um, for code enforcement. So we've had a bit of code enforcement activity underneath uh, in the last few months. Luckily, we have Luke Ecker, our recent city management coordinator, doing twenty hours a week of code enforcement now, uh, the last few months. So Luke and Laura, um, I feel like I'm pregnant at General Hospital, I just named it myself. Um, uh, they are preparing for policy updates. They're often doing a user manual. Uh, we are going to work with the chamber to do some information sessions, open houses and listening sessions with the community around some of the issues that have been popping up of significance, temporary signage, A boards and sidewalk cafes are kind of the hot issue at our weather deck nights where people want to be outside. We want people outside. But when you're on the sidewalk, we have to have some rules around that. So it's kind of become a hot issue. We're going to try to um, work with the community on that. The other issue is we have a couple neighborhoods in the city where parking on sidewalks has become an issue. So we've been sending out postcards as a reminder, hey, we need ADU access, we need access to our metal boxes. So please don't park on, on the sidewalks. We're having mixed results, so this will be an area focus for the summer, I mean, fall. And then, um, the, you'll see this in future meetings, the development agreement, we get Dubal Village, which is a four-party agreement. Um, not very many of you, I think, were here when this was negotiated and implemented. Uh, but the Dubal Village Development Agreement expires in June. Lot C one, which is the one where it's on Main Street that has a fence around the barn there that has some graffiti. That actually, that project is active. It's a mixed-use development. It's going to have residential on top, commercial on bottom. Um, I've seen the plans. It's actually quite beautiful. Um, so that's scheduled for planning commission hearing in June and July. But in order to allow that project to proceed, we are going to bring to council and they'll have two public hearings, the opportunity to extend that development agreement so we can get the project done under the rules that were negotiated at the time. One thing we um, have talked to all four of the parties about is dropping DFA and Dubal, the apartment part of it, is that work has kind of expired. And instead entering into a two-party agreement between the city and just the C one lot owner to get that development finished. Um, so staff have reached out to DFA, myself and uh, Director Thomas both had uh, really um, hopeful and engaging and caring conversations with DFA. Um, I, I'm, I'm really proud of the state of that relationship. Um, so uh, they're excited, uh, both DFA and AHV are not interested in being included in the development agreement anymore. Um, so the DIA is scheduled for hearing on May fourteenth and May twentieth. Um, so work come on. Next slide. So just quick update for me. Um, so I, along with the mayor, the mayor will be there for AWC event. I will be out in Washington DC, May twentieth through the twenty-second to meet with our federal delegation on our appropriations request. We asked for over a million dollars in federal funding for Third Avenue and for um, the city municipal office. So we'll be meeting with them. We also have the opportunity for a USDA grant, um, that would make farmer mark, farmers market improvements and food availability for rural communities. We're really excited about that. So we'll have a meeting with USDA as well as, though the news seems iffy, but for now, we're scheduled to meet with National Endowment for the Arts uh, for an opportunity to renovate, um, fully renovate the inside of the depot building to uh, redo it to its historical significance. So if the money exists, we're really excited about it. That's an interesting project because it is a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar minimum spend. So a lot of money could be invested in depot parks and the depot buildings if we have the opportunity to for it. Um, we can officially announce that we received a Washington Board of Tourism Grant for ten thousand dollars. Um, this is going to be for our Fall Heritage Festival in collaboration with the Dubal Historical Society as well as to do a tourism map that shows all the agricultural businesses and farms in our UG area. And then the Heritage Festival will be like a heritage agricultural festival. So we got the official word. The money is going to be deposited in our account. We can officially announce it and we'll do some more publicity of that. Uh, in the last two months, uh, speaking of how far these grants are sometimes to complete, we have completed the following grant applications. We did a hometown grant from T-Mobile, uh, Get Actives, and that's for fifty thousand dollars. We'll hear in August-ish. Uh, Get Active, A Active Grant from Councilmember Perry, the Port of Seattle Tourism. We're now doing a two-year tourism grant and it has a one-to-one match. So they allocate the money, um, it's pre-allocated to the city. So the City of Dubal gets ten thousand dollars for each year, so twenty thousand dollars. And we need to match that same amount. Um, we put together a package, send it in for pre-approval. Um, every year, the Port of Seattle moves the dial on what they want their grants to look like. So I got word today that they want us to re-envision it. So thinking about other opportunities we might hear tonight to fund events and music. Paying for artists is now part, uh, more part of what the Port of Seattle wants to see than not so clowns. So I had a concept around um, bringing more children's programs to the city. And that would fall under the Port of Seattle branch, but not anything that would help us have grants or help help us have events moving forward. So I've put in for tents, tables, some uh, things that make city-run events easier and all that has to be spread. So it's more around uh, first they said they didn't want special event stuff. Now they're saying they want heavy on special event. So, uh, even though we put in a grant, I'm redoing. So, uh, just want to point out that there's some opportunity there. If you hear of other things that you might want to consider for that grant, I'll be rewriting it the next two months or two weeks. And then we put in for the King County Youth and Amateur Sports Grant. It is that the, the grant program, um, does require a bit of work, the King County Sports, but uh, we put in for the Full Mountain Plan Grant to uh, both assess and potentially construct uh, the open space mountain bike trail and multi-use trail program. Um, murals are starting. So if you haven't been at first in Virginia, we have a base color um, on that. So all of our muralists are looking for dry seasons to begin their mur- murals. Uh, Alex is going, who's going to be the one in front of mini mart, is going to start soon. So we've cleaned up all the vegetation, cleaned up, power washed that wall. So that will be going up soon. Um, and then just as an invitation for our council members, as part of our wellness activities, so um, Deputy City Clerk McDonald has done a fantastic job of scheduling a whole year of activities, the wellness um, activity. So this month, we're in the middle of biking. We're all doing a bike challenge. Steve's going to win. Um, uh, but in New York, the police department won the reading challenge uh, last month. But we are now doing Monday Walks at eleven thirty for thirty minutes. City Mayor McPartick, any phone number, want to join city staff on those? Next slide. The reminder in the Rose Room on Saturday, we'll have a show your pride art, or art event where um, on Saturday, we're creating art. And then throughout May and June, we'll go straight to art here in this building. Um, all the arts supplies came in today. Down in the Rose Room, we'll have music. I'm going to grab some food and hopefully it'll just be a nice, nice afternoon of art creation here in the building on Saturday.
We're going to show off the art that we were creating, that's created on May ten.
Yeah, so we're going to put it all around track. Got these really cool magnetic frames that are really light. Where you, it's kind of what you buy for children to like but we'll have these distant framing, so it looks nice. And then the Cultural Commission on May twelfth is going to help put everything together and then figure out where we're going to put everything. What? So Steve already talked about these, um, our Public Works Week's events. We've heard back from uh, Congresswoman Kim Shar's office. They are sending someone to come to our ribbon cutting. Um, and then we sent it out to all of our electives and um, both federal and state legislative delegates as well as Councilmember Perry. So, uh, sign for that on May nineteenth. And finally, we got a couple more than touch a truck. So as we uh, post this, we already have sent it to the school district. Uh, we have it on a bunch of children's calendars, but what the community doesn't know yet, and I hope they Uh, we have it on a bunch of children's calendars, but what the community doesn't know yet, and I hope they will be happy about it. They will have some free giveaways as well as shoot ice, so. But about that. And with that, oh, we have a couple videos. So, um, one of our community members, um, Ryan, I can't remember Ryan's last name. I apologize, Ryan, if you're listening. Um, has created, uh, some videos for us to advertise Summer Stage. If we can get them up, because they're really, he did a really nice job with them. Ryan Miller, thank you. That's a good one for you. Yeah.
Whoever thought you had two new screens?
Never. And we probably just need to show one healthy. And we also got in today, so each of the four earlier Summer Stages, not the twenty-fifth anniversary. That will have merchandise, but each week, the folks that come to Summer Stage will each, each week will have a different troll. So the first week, I haven't decided which color is which, but we got our trolls stickers in. And then as you saw in Steve's, um, presentation, we have trolls writing trusts. Um, so those stickers will be available on Touch Truck. So, uh, for those of you who have water bottles, it's one lot, we'll have that for. Um, but we have other things like sunglasses for prom date mixtape and other things that we found for people at Summer Stage here. Any questions?
I'm just, uh, I'm, you know, it's seven and five.
I'm willing to, um, wait for my council report to ask the question if that would be better.
That would appreciate it.
Yeah.
Excited, you know, there's something later to spend.
With that, I'll file the council will be two thousand seven and five.
And whereas the city of Duval encourages all residents to participate in events. And activities that demonstrate appreciation, such as displaying the American flag. Volunteering at veterans' board organizations and writing letters and thanks to service members. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval. Hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-five as National Military Appreciation Month in the City of Duval. I call upon all residents to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies and activities that honor and thank those who have served and continue to serve our nation. Uh, the next one is Older Americans Month, and do we have, uh, anyone here to read through that? Okay. All right, well, um, I will, uh, actually go to the podium and read it then, and then we, um, if you can come up and we can clear the picture. Not very often we have, but lovely to see you. Whereas Older Americans Month is observed nationally as a time to recognize the contributions of older Americans. Highlight aging trends and reaffirm our unwavering commitment to serving older adults. Providing reassurance to our community members, local government officials and organizations serving older adults. Whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities and backgrounds can participate and live independently. And whereas the twenty twenty-five theme for Older Americans Month, Whoop the Script on Aging, is a powerful call to action. It focuses on transforming how society perceives, talks about and approaches aging. And whereas Duval's growing population of older adults enriches our community with their strength, wisdom and diverse life experiences. And the city of Duval is committed to honoring their contributions, exploring opportunities for them to stay active and engaged. And highlighting the opportunities for purpose, exploration and connection that come with aging. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval. Do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-five as Older Americans Month in the City of Duval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a word?
Yeah, uh, I'm Kira Avery. I'm the Executive Director of the Snow Valley Senior Center in Carnation. Uh, but we have about forty percent of the participants who come from Duval to participate. Uh, we do lots of programs, low cost and free so that all of the seniors in the valley do this space. Thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Uh, the next proclamation that we have this evening is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is an annual observance that celebrates the contributions through valiant and rich cultural traditions of Asian Americans. Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. And whereas the observance traces its origins to Public Law ninety-five dash four nineteen. Signed by President Jimmy Carter on October fifth, nineteen seventy-eight. Which first designated a week and day for the commem- commemoration. And was expanded to a month in nineteen ninety by Public Law one oh one dash two eight three. And whereas the dates of May seventh and May tenth have special significance, marking the arrival of the first Japanese immigrant in eighteen forty-three. And the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in eighteen sixty-nine by Chinese laborers respectively. And whereas in two thousand nine, the Presidential Proclamation formalized the designation as Asian American. And Pacific Islander Heritage Month, ensuring nationwide recognition of AAPI histories and achievements. And whereas the twenty twenty-five national theme, A Legacy of Leadership and Resilience, honors four decades of AAPI leaders. Who have established foundations for future generations to thrive amid change and adversity. And whereas the city of Duval has a proud tradition of recognizing heritage observances. Through official proclamations that unite our community and reflection, education and celebration. And whereas residents, businesses, schools and community organizations in Duval are encouraged. To participate in cultural events, educational programs and volunteer activities that honor and support AAPI communities. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, hereby claim May twenty twenty-five as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Duval. We are grateful for the AAPI community for being an integral part of the tapestry of our city. And value the immense contribution you make to our community every day. And final proclamation, uh, we have is for Peace Officers Memorial Day. So thank you, Chief, for being here this evening. Whereas Peace Officers Memorial Day, observed annually on May fifteenth, honors the federal, state and local law enforcement officers. Who have made the ultimate sacrifice or have been disabled in the line of duty while safeguarding the rights and freedoms of others. And whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designating May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Recognizing the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers across the nation. And whereas the United States flag is flown at half-staff on May fifteenth in solemn tribute to fallen officers. As directed by Public Law one oh three dash three two two. And whereas the city of Duval acknowledges and is grateful for the courage and dedication of its law enforcement officers. Who risk their lives daily to ensure the safety and security of our community. And whereas it is fitting and proper that the residents of Duval join in commemorating Peace Officers Memorial Day. To honor the memory of those who have fallen and to express our gratitude to those who continue to serve. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval. Hereby proclaim May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Duval. Let us join in this day of reflection by hanging our flags at half-staff. In honor of those law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to our communities and nation. Okay. Thank you. Um, and with that, we will move on to comments from the audience. Um, I will go ahead and read the roles into.
Mayor, may I say something real quick?
Go ahead.
This, this related to, uh, peace officers more, but, uh, you know, I just, I. You know, people are strongly about this, as most of you, you know, I know the chief certainly understands that, but, uh. We, you know, so much of what our police force here in Duval does is the kind of scenes.
Yes.
Uh, not, you know, not seen, uh, by most of the public. And we tend to take the, the, I think, a bit for granted. We tend to, you know, perhaps think that, well, since Duval is a sleepy, you know, little town, maybe they have an easy job. Well, they don't. They don't have an easy job here. And what our officers do here in Duval goes a long, long way to make Duval what it is. And keep it a peaceful, uh, sleepy little town. It wouldn't be such a, such a great place without our police. So thank, thank you and your officers, Chief.
Thank you. Go ahead.
May fifteenth is really important to me as well as all the officers that work for me. Uh, I worked at an agency where we lost an officer. And, uh, made a couple trips back to Washington DC for Police Officer Memorial Week. Uh, in my day, and I stood guard at the memorial in DC. Um, for enter nineteen is the number of law enforcement officers that have been lost in our state. Um, and it's not something we take lightly. It's something that we understand the risk associated with that, but. It can happen anytime, anyplace. Uh, we've had an officer in Duval shot, uh, in the past, and. It is a, a risk that we're all aware of, that's a risk that we take on knowing the charge that we have to make sure that. Uh, those that we, uh, work for and protect, um, are able to sleep better at night. So. I appreciate all the kind words from the council and I do appreciate all the support. Uh, from, uh, all of you as well as the citizens for the city of Duval. Um, it is, uh, a city that, um. That has a tendency to, um, have a lot of people pass through and. We are not immune to some of those things and our officers are prepared for that event on a daily basis. So. I appreciate all the kind words and I appreciate the aspect that, uh, all of you support us and work through this process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great. Um, now we will move on to comments from the audience. Um, I'll go ahead and read the rules that are printed, uh, on our council agenda into the record. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three-minute speaking duration. While representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes. Before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and city of residence. Each speaker and all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to individual members of council or staff. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to P O Box thirteen hundred, Duval, Washington, nine eight zero one nine, or deposited at the city hall drop box located at one five five three five Main Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council is forth and is commissioned solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written co- public comments and subsequently furnish them to the city council or the relevant board or commission. However, it's important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable board or commission meetings. Any written comments received after the new deadline for written comments will be shared with the council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. And with that, do we have any members of the audience that would like to provide public comments this evening? Not seeing any, so we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Really sorry, um, my water bottle is not functioning. I can turn it open a million times and it won't open, and I don't have a backup water. Is there any bottled water anywhere?
There's cups and water in the question.
In the kitchen, in the little secret kitchen? Oh, okay, thank you. I'm so sorry. I'm just thirsty.
Um, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, now moving on to schedule items for the mayor's report. Um, as you're all aware, the legislative session ended um within the last couple of weeks. Um, one key thing that I think is of great benefit to our police department is a passage of the council-mounted criminal justice sales tax, um, and the increase in limit for uh what we can do. Um, prior to its passage, I had talked to uh City Administrator McNabb. Um, this is a priority of mine to make sure that we are doing everything we can to fund uh our police department appropriately, and uh especially with general fund revenues uh in the fiscal plan. We have an opportunity potentially to um have dedicated funding, even though it's not large. Um, I've asked our staff to uh begin to research what we can and can't do and be ready to bring something forward to council for consideration and hopefully approval as soon as the law becomes law. Uh, that will definitely assist with the revenue gap that we have for public safety, although not solve it. Um, and then I just also wanted to note that um the Snowfall Valley Governments Association meeting is uh May twenty-eighth of this month, um, so please get your reservations in for that. Um, and then as the city administrator noted, we'll both be in Washington DC week after next um for uh, well, lobbying as well as uh going in for the uh nationally and city state board president fly-in. Uh, we go in, all fifty states are invited, uh, the presidents and their executive directors from their state leagues. Uh, so we'll be flying in for two days of meetings with federal agencies and the White House. Um, finally, there was one other item I was going to mention. Um, it is not coming to mind right now, so it must not be very important at the moment. So I'll go ahead and leave that and conclude my report. Um, and we did do the city administrators' report, so we'll turn to council reports. Are there any council members that would like to speak? Councilmember Anathen?
Yeah, um, I just had a little bit of feedback on the Duval Village B one lot. Um, I have a couple things. Third, I happened to be driving by, and I noticed the poison hemlock is back in full force. And it looks a little better than last year, but um funny enough, uh, two of our crew were putting in a, uh, one of those yellow signs right in the poison hemlock, and I started to get really nervous, so hopefully they're fine, but back. And I think there's a bus stop there for the kids. Anyway, makes me nervous. I, I know that, I think the city contacted the owner of that lot last year. Um,
Oh, today?
Oh, oh, so maybe they noticed it when they were putting the sign in. Yeah, it was making me feel nervous. Okay. And then secondly, um, and I, I'm wondering, we'll have maybe a bigger meeting about this, but the development agreement extension, um, the fact that there's a vested fee to two thousand fifteen, we keep doing extensions, and it makes me very nervous that the value of that vesting to two thousand fifteen just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger as inflation and our fees have gone up. Um, so I would like more information about that portion when it comes to council, um, about our, our ability to adjust the, the fees to um, you know, uh, inflation and, and what they are now.
Uh, yeah, I can respond to that. So that will be coming to council. Um, I think the council will have the decision in front of them on the development agreement. So the development agreement, the extension, will hold the development fees to two thousand fifteen. And really, the balance that you'll all need to consider and strike is whether or not you want to incentivize and motivate that project to get finished. Um, they certainly are in development, trying to work towards getting that project done. And so, um, we'll have the amount that we might be essentially waiving
Mm-hmm.
Um, by extending that agreement for a couple more months, but that's really, that's where we're at. It's whether or not we want the project or done, or you want, want to get the fees that you would at today's rate. It's only because of the, you know, expiration of the agreement that you wouldn't be charging twenty thousand fifteen rates, so. Um, the public discussion about why the lack, that property has exchanged hands a couple times, and you develop as soon as they bought it, got onto it quickly. But that'll be um part of the public hearing conversation.
Mm-hmm. And I had uh another item. Um, I am so thankful we acknowledged Military Appreciation Month. And last year, we did a little something to acknowledge, um, aside from just a proclamation, we did a little flag ceremony. I don't know if that's something that's possible, or potentially another organization wanting to do something like that. Um, maybe mail, uh, letting people know that there's other memorial day events around town. I think there's one up at the uh Novelty Cemetery. Just, I'm just wondering if we can do a little bit more around uh Military Appreciation Month.
So Ireland, um, Forces Service Day, which is our service week, which is when we did those activities, is the third week of May.
Mm-hmm.
So we're all agreeing. Wonderful. Thank you. Great. Any other council members have any print work? Have any more shape or?
I have a question, Connie. Is that okay? Not so, it's not what we report. I, I know we had a discussion on uh ADUs in the, the uh last council meeting that I was absent for. And more discussions has uh transposed, I guess, and emails and maybe other places, but that I, the reason I'm asking this question, I have some other ADU um aspects that I'd like, you know, like discussed besides what we get sites, you know, overall height. Uh, I want to make sure the council is aware of really what we're getting into and really what the overall overarching rationale is for that. What is our next discussion?
Um, the ADU public hearings will be May fourteenth, so next week is planning commission, so the whole packet to the planning commission will have all the relevant documents, so uh be sure to read that if you want to attend planning pressure. And then there'll be an additional public hearing at this council on May twentieth.
Okay, and.
Along with presentations.
Sure. And then should I get my concerns in before the public hearing or, or?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Uh, no, send them to the mayor, yeah.
Okay, okay, good, good. Thank you.
And this is just adding on to that, just when we, we meet the Thursday before each meeting, we update the council calendar. So that's the only place council, the shape for if you're looking for where there are things wrong with each other. That's usually pretty up to date on that.
Well, we'll go around and look if anybody else has questions, because it's for council reports right at this point, so. I'll report if they don't have a question. Go ahead.
Um, later this month, so Thursday, May twenty-second, um, at the Depot Fire Pit, just one of the other hats that we're, we're gonna do a United States flag retirement ceremony with scouts. So it's just that, one of those times of the year where people are changing out their flags, um, and I know the city said they, they had some to retire, so that will be happening. You'll see something posted on social media soon, but just to give you an advance heads up.
Any other helpful remarks? All right, okay, we'll go ahead. Um, you have, are you adding on your report or you have more questions?
I'll add to my report.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, one thing that reminded me when you spoke about the rules for public comment. Um, in the top three court, it looks like the um email comment from Rachel Del Cartman was intended for, but it didn't make it into the clerk's report, the body of the email from Rachel Del Cartman.
So what was the clerk address, if that came to your right address in the right time?
Um, I added what was sent. Um, so I didn't add the body of the email because there was an attachment there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think the body of the email was actually her comment, and the attachment was just relevant information. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, uh, clerk, you can confirm that with uh Del Cartman, because she wanted to, um, she may, we don't know without asking her if that's what she wanted included. Uh, I think clerk made a correct assumption to uh submit the, include the attachment, not necessarily body email. If, so, thank you. All right, uh, moving on to uh presentations, we have our class from the Duval Music Crawl uh with Morgan Henry, the principal of Morgan Henry Presents. So, Mr. Henry, uh, please give me a fresh opinion.
Hello, council, City of Duval, Chief. My name is Morgan Henry, and uh I'm here to talk to you all about the Duval Music Crawl. That's our logo from last year. Pretty epic. Got some of the historic buildings on there. You know, giraffe playing a really tall mic, uh saxophone.
Yeah.
Classic. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to come in today and present to you the ideas for this year's two thousand twenty-five Duval Music Crawl, because we would love to see it happen again. I know there's a lot of people in the community that would love to see it happen again as well, and I'm fully understanding that money is tight these days in all aspects of our lives, including the City of Duval. So can roll on to the next screen here. So I just want to do a little wrap-up real quick of two thousand twenty-four. We talked about some of these um la- at the end of last summer when I came in and talked about how it went. So last summer, we did nine total Saturdays from July sixth to August thirty-first. We had four venues. Amarillo BBQ, Grateful Bread, The Grange, and the Duval Tavern. We showcased thirty-six musical acts featuring local Snowfall Valley acts and regional acts. Uh, we drove business to the downtown corridor, created a sense of community through a new and exciting event. Um, and I wanted to talk about that for a little bit. Uh, I went to probably four of the Saturdays, and I met a lot of newer people to the community that were completely jazzed that Duval does something like this. And I've actually ran into this throughout the entire Snowfall Valley, a lot of the new people that are moving out here. You know, some of them, one story, one conversation I had was a couple that lived in Ballard. Been in Ballard, you know, there's live music every single night if you want it. And one of the, the things that they were, they were sad about moving out here is that they wouldn't have a musical option every night if they wanted, and they were very pleased to come out to Snowfall Valley and realize that we do have a thriving arts and music scene out here. And they were, and I had that conversation with this couple at the Duval Tavern actually last year at the Music Crawl. So it is having a, an impact on our new citizens and our locals as well. Um, and a lot of locals came out to the Music Crawl every Saturday last year. Um, again, and it's also family-oriented events. I saw a lot of families taking advantage of the Saturday music and in the event and the restaurants and having dinner and listening to live music. And as somebody that grew up in this community as a child, uh, that was immersed in the hippie and art scene, it's a beautiful thing to see the children's enjoying the live music and art as well. Um, we showcased some of the community's favorite Main Street locations, being Grange, Duval Tavern, uh, Amarillo, and uh Grateful Bread. Um, as we spoke at the end of last summer, uh, the early venues were tough to get a, a consistent amount of people at, be it, I think it's partly because it's a new event. Um, also, we had a pretty hot summer last year, and we really actually had some really beautiful Saturdays. Um, so I think it's kind of hard to, to get people down there on the, on the concrete during the day, but The Grange and the Duval Tavern were, were standing room only everything, every single Saturday. Um, so as I said before, we, we provided new residents with the opportunity to experience the history of arts and music and gathering here that we have in Duval. And uh it also gave the opportunity for new and local residents to get to know each other. And I did see some of that as well, some uh locals and some newer people sitting at the same table and join a pizza at The Grange and listen to some tunes. So, next slide. So for the two thousand twenty-five, I've revamped the schedule a bit, so it's a shorter time span. Five total Saturdays just in the month of August, so August second through the thirtieth. And I did that for two reasons, basically, one being budget. Um, I understand that the city is not going to be able to fund the entire event at twenty thousand dollars this year, which is understandable, and I think also kind of shorting it, shortening it would also make it easier to promote it. Um, I think it would be easier to get into people's minds if we're doing just, say, the month of August and we advertise it that way. Um, I think it'd be more of a benefit to, to all the venues involved. Um, just more kind of a concise advertising plan and schedule, I think would benefit the crawl. And then I continue to, continue to grow on what we created last summer, because like I said, there was a lot of, a lot of buzz around it, a lot of people enjoyed it. There was a lot of people that came out every Saturday. Um, I had people asking me, recently, I've had quite a few people asking me if we were gonna do this again. They want to see it happen. Um, and the potential for this, as we discussed in, in the beginning discussions last year, the potential for this is, is unknown, but you know, it's immense. It could uh become something extremely special that we uh can do annually here in the town of Duval. And as we continue to do it, you know, we can grow the awareness outside of Duval, to Woodinville and Redmond and Carnation and Monroe, and hopefully uh get some out-of-towners in here for the day as well to enjoy our restaurants and live music and immerse themselves in our history of music and gathering here in Duval. So the revised schedule would start at the Grateful Bread this year instead of Amarillo, because one of the problems with the Grateful Bread last year is that the time slot there was basically at the end of their day, a lot of people. We missed the window of, of opportunity and business there, so I definitely don't want to do that again this year. I've already talked to Grateful Bread, and they really want to do it. Uh, they love the idea of starting early, so this would start at, it would be from eleven AM to one PM, so it'd kind of be their lunch rush there. And then uh I had an idea to go to McCormick Park and put a musician at the beach. Because I went down there the last weekend, we did this last year, because I was just wanting to go. Put my feet in the water, and I realized that that's where all the people were in the afternoon. There was probably a hundred people down there, families, everybody enjoying the river. Um, I think under, there's a tree right there with a bench that we could definitely put a solo musician at with a battery-powered speaker, and I think it would go over really well down there. So that would be kind of the one to three PM time slot, and then we'd come back to Amarillo BBQ, then The Grange, and then we'd end at the tavern. And this model here, we'd be doing twenty-five musical acts. And uh this year, I also want to incorporate more Snowfall Valley acts than last year. And that would be easier to do with lesser apps too. Um, so the budget last year was twenty K. The initial estimates for the shortened series would be twelve thousand dollars. And I'm also working on acquiring alternative funding to subsidize the budget. Um, again, because I, I realize and I've, I'm a, become aware through conversations with city staff and uh council members that the twenty thousand dollar ask is definitely not likely this year. So I want to work with the city, I want to work with this budget, I want to figure out if the city can fund any of it. And then I can go about finding where I can get the other funding from. Um, I will tell you that uh to our Duval Chamber meeting, our board meeting on Thursday morning, we will be discussing this and seeing if the chamber would like to be involved financially and uh be a partner in the event. So I would be looking at co-producing this event with the chamber, so that would be bringing in a whole nother party to uh, to this endeavor, which would help with advertising. Party to uh to this endeavor, which would help with advertising and promotion and, you know, oh. All that. All that uh awareness. It would definitely help us get the word out. And the people that I've talked to at the chamber thus far are very excited about the idea. Um, this is something that we started talking about at the beginning of the year is being more involved in events. Being more visible downtown in Duval, so. And this kind of fits right into that idea, so I have a, I have a good feeling about Thursday morning. So we'll see how that goes. And we'll see. Yeah, you could already hit that. Yeah, basically, just uh I want to work together to find opportunities to continue this crawl because. Unfortunately, if it doesn't happen this year, the likelihood that we're going to do it in the future is not good. Because. Things rarely come back when they end. So that's the short presentation for y'all. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Um, Councilmember McHenry.
Just wanted to throw up one thing that I was thinking about. Some of the ones I went to were during the hottest parts of the day and, you know, were a little dead because of the heat.
Yeah.
Um, but also that time of day, and I think about all the parents with slightly older kids that are out at sports, but the younger kids, are there any? Uh, children's artists, like musicians, that could bring in a pretty good. Crowd. I mean, and maybe there are some in the Snoke Valley.
Yeah.
Um, as well, um, but especially in the Seattle area, I'm sure. I'm hoping, I know it's kind of niche, but especially down by McCormick Park where there's the beach and everything. Um. Those younger kids who are, you know. Uh, pre K and, you know, up through elementary school might really be excited about that kind of artist, so might want to try one of those. I don't know. And then I wasn't sure.
I love that suggestion.
The kind of grant that you were talking about before, if there's a potential there to help, but I always want that.
And there are some kid uh orientated musicians, actually just one reached out to me last week called uh Harmonica Pocket. And he's uh, he's fabulous.
Hmm.
And he wants to do. He wants to do multiple events or shows out here this winter, so yeah, that's definitely an option. I think that's a great idea. Because when you. Bring the kids, the parents come.
Um, city administrator and then mayor for ten person.
Can I do a couple of this? Yes. One, we do hear from community members that they really want young age um programming, and so the city is trying to do that with. Grant splash day in August. We're working with Casey Ellis on doing a storyboard, like a story walk. Um, so I I do know that there are members of the community that would like kind of taller aged ever activities, so we can. Uh, encourage that. Um, the second thing is rumor or not rumor that Carnation, like that we could. Carnation is doing a music crawl.
That is true.
Okay.
But. It is. A one day crawl.
Okay.
So we had this grand idea, Rhonda and I, to Rhonda's the city manager of Carnation. Uh, we had this grand idea to do. Basically a five. Pretty much the month of August too, but we were going to do Sundays. So we're going to try to, you know, team it up, do a lower valley crawl all weekend, basically between Duval and Carnation, but um. Couple of the venues in Carnation, we got out of too late and they are had already scheduled stuff for that, so we're, we're doing one. Big Sunday. Music crawl on August. Seventeenth. Yeah.
Um, and then the third is, I think what's going to be a question, or was a question, is yes, the Port of Seattle. Grant, which is, I think, what Carnation.
That is, that is what Carnation is using.
We do have an opportunity since I have to redo the grant um to use that money for this purpose.
Yay for Seattle.
Or for that, I have other ideas, so I'm not promising any more.
No, I I understand.
Yeah, so I sort of want to point out some comments that I love to call, so this is not a. In any way, like events, I think all these things presented to you all, the one way that I guess I have concern and I'm glad you brought up the chamber is. You know, when we do. Uh. That's in better, uh, those are sort of, they're they're distributed and located in places that sort of it's a city event. And it's being sponsored by the city and city funds are going into that event. When we host these events at specific businesses, it's more of a subsidy you're providing. And advertising or draw for that business. So I love, you know, those are the types of things I think should be underwritten more upon the chamber because that's their role to. Uh, you know, develop business. I think the city is very interested from an economic development perspective. I have never seen any numbers that show. You know, conversion rates or uptick or, you know, this Saturday without the crawl versus this Saturday with the crawl. Drove up business and then there's sales revenue that comes to the, uh, you know. Through the business taxes to. To the city and and so that type of connection, I think, has value to me when we think about scarce resourcing. So again, it's nothing about the event. It's really more of the structuring.
Yeah.
So when you mention things down at the park, you know, that's of more interest. From a city funding perspective than maybe at a given business, if it is at a business, I think they were out more locations last year. You know, there shouldn't be a new door venue, which is, you know, tougher for like the grain because it's indoors. When in thousand words, everyone, you know, you could sit. Uh, when they're playing at the Grange, you could sit in the benches in front of the city hall and listen to the music, uh, albeit. It's great if they also. Buy things at that business, but that's definitely my opinion. We kind of get into a gray area where, you know, there are specific businesses that are benefiting versus other businesses. And that's where I think some of the grants, the targeted grant, if there was a grant application on this, you know, has a different. Been to it than sort of the city giving money to essentially provide a draw to support businesses in the city and not the rest of the businesses. So, so again. This is sort of a negative, but basically we want to provide more context for a lovely event. I just think in terms of how we fund some of these versus city sponsored events. It's a bit, little bit of a step in terms of when we start uh essentially underwriting certain businesses.
Totally.
So.
I definitely understand.
Did you think the grain was inside?
No, it was outside. Yeah, but I'm just saying, we 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 need to be really careful in terms of where these are and access, everything else, because they need to be. Shouldn't require any type of. You know, purchasing it, but. It's it's kind of, as I said, a double edged sword. We're, we're doing it essentially economic development, but not requiring. You know, purchases and then the the benefits of the city, you know, direct versus indirect. We don't, we don't measure it, so that's where I'm.
Councilmember Nelson. Yeah, this is a a great new concept. I like it. I feel like you addressed a lot of the terms we had. Um. I, and I I agree with Councilmember Mercer, just the concern, and I think that when we talked about it at the committee when we were reviewing this last year. Um, it was, the intention wasn't that this would become necessarily a city funded recurring event that the city that it's. You know, seed money, let's try it, but the goal would be to find partnerships. Maybe if the businesses saw value in it, the host business would contribute partially. So like, there's the. It's this idea of let's, let's try it. It'd be hard, a big lift for the businesses, you know, to try something out, but we did have, um, I think we used some of the ARCA money if I. Strategic fund, strategic fund, so um. One time money that we don't necessarily anticipate having ongoing, so um, I like your idea that you're thinking about partnering with the chamber, maybe some grant money. Maybe even talking to some of the businesses to address your uh point that. Um, you know, in some of these cases, maybe the business would want, because a lot of these businesses already invite musicians and uh and do that, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, just a thought, and then I love the idea about a kids themed event, the the one time I I actually went several times, but one of the times I was over at. Grateful Bread, a dad showed up with two little kids and they were like dancing around and it was really cute. Um, so I I see that concept of children. Put some sidewalk chalk out. I mean, we already get sidewalk chalk um. Here, um, it's easy, just kind of the energy of the event is to really drive people to visit all of downtown and not just. Show up for a music thing and go home. So anything that we can do to um. Make sure that it's not just about visiting. The business that's hosting it, but that it's really come downtown and enjoy Duval. Um, so.
And and that would. The chamber would would play a big part in that and their involvement, because that is something that I talked to Brandon about in our initial conversations about this getting ready for Thursday. Um. Is we would want to promote. The other businesses on Main Street as well, right? You know, CCCs and.
Yes.
And uh. Rustic Cabin, you know, here's two coffee spots if you're down here and use coffee.
And even the retail businesses, I think that's really what we're hoping to be as well.
Yeah.
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 Great presentation, though. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you. And I thought of grateful dad or grateful dad. Grateful Brad uh popped in my head when he mentioned the uh the kid act, because I think that would be a perfect place for it.
And they need some umbrellas because it was blasting hot.
I I talked to, I talked to them about that. They redid their fences off.
Oh, good.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
But yeah, the the umbrellas are definitely on the agenda for it, for sure.
Cool. Um, council member, we prepared for council members, I think we're gonna start with old council member, Olin Supple or Kuvell? Okay, go ahead, council member Shaver.
Um, let's see, so a couple of events. First of all, I love, I love the idea of cutting back uh a bit. And by the way, just so the rest of the council knows, we could cut back even more. Uh. And if we.
Yeah, we could do four weeks, we could, you know.
Right, so so the twelve thousand isn't set in stone. Uh. You know, we could do whatever, you know, one less venue or shorten it up. Instead of, what'd you say, five weeks or four weeks or whatever? So that that's one, one possibility. I also like the idea of the local businesses having skin in the game.
Yeah.
Specifically the downtown businesses. I know, you know, let's face it, you know, the the venue, the businesses, as I said, we've probably been a lot, a lot of benefit from it, but. But certainly the downtown area, promoting the downtown businesses, like maybe having some signage out during each performance.
Yeah.
Coffee shops, restaurants.
Yeah.
Whatever.
That's all, that's a great idea. Brandon and I also discussed. Something along those lines as well.
Yeah, yeah, good, good. And then, you know, you know, the council knows my personal. View uh on this, but uh, you know, music is an important part of the arts. The arts in general are are. One of Duval's primary identities. Uh, so in my mind, this isn't like an extravagant, you know, overspending or. Or extravagant use of money in any way. It's simply supporting our arts here in Duval, which we absolutely have to keep doing. We have to keep encouraging it, supporting it as much as we can with the city, uh partnering the local businesses, uh as the suggestion is. I think this is just really, really important that we contribute some to this.
Thank you. And council member Oren.
I would like to say to add, um. This is anecdotal. I don't have data, you know, to support this, but I I certainly am a fan of the event and I've been talking about it since it happened last year to to other folks and. Um, whether whether it was them telling me, out of town folks specifically, um, whether it was them telling me that they came specifically for it and had a great time or. Me telling them that it existed and them being excited about coming this coming summer. Um, and so it's it's just anecdotal, but I, you know, I I do believe that there is a boost of out of town folks coming into Duval. Because of the event, so I, and I really appreciate it. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, city administrator McNamara. So one of the things that Port of Seattle highlighted today. Is that they're taking a different approach with their grant and you have to identify when you apply which metrics you're going to use to. Evaluate their grant moving forward, and one of the metrics is. Did it draw out of town visitors? And so part of, and I'm, you know, I'm agnostic on how to use the grant, although I thought maybe shall I did prepare? Um, but um. We need to find things that. Will meet the metrics that the Port of Seattle wants, and one of them is things that draw people from outside Duval.
Yeah.
And that's how they want that many used moving forward. So. I don't know if this is the time or if you want to, you know, potentially add it to the agenda, but I, or we can do it next week, um, because we have time, but um, if you would like me to. Present a revised Port of Seattle grant with. Money. For this, you know, talk to me after a time, see if you want to add it to the agenda, because I'm at a place where I can fit it.
Great. Thank you. Um, one last question, council member Nelson.
Oh, sure. I just want to say I'm in favor, but I I still want to see this event transition into having its own. Funding as well. Does that make sense? So however the grant. Is I I really like to see there be a direction of partner with the chamber, just because I know a lot of these port grants. Aren't providing ongoing funding. There are one time funding sometimes, so.
City administrator McNamara.
Yeah, I think that's really important as we consider this. So the way the Port of Seattle grant works, and again, they they move the dial, it seems like every year when you apply. But historically. You cannot fund the same event. Year after year for the Port of Seattle, so they kind of view it similarly how the original money was, which is seed money for a new event. So for instance, last year we used it for moving in the park and the train event. We cannot hold those event again, events again using port money. They expect you to either. Operationalize it or do something different, so. While and and. The first year, if we use all of our port money on it, it's only ten thousand dollars, so it would not cover the full cost of this event.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Riley, and so council, uh, please send in your uh thoughts on this and we will uh move from there. All right, uh, moving on to existing business.
They're doing a little beating.
All right, see you later. You too. Uh, existing business, uh, discussion on staff manual and update of DMC title four on personnel for discussion, city administrator McNamara.
Uh, yes, so I have a presentation. I'm just here to do another point. Uh, you have a memo in the council packet on the cost of the two benefits that would potentially be. Added for the non-represented employees with how I currently um. Put together the resolution. We did not receive any comments, so just wanted to give an update moving forward. I'm going to put together an ordinance that. Finalizes everything, but here to answer any questions if you'd like them.
Not saying any, um, so I can move on to agenda bill twenty five dash zero. Oh, go ahead, council member Nelson.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanted to ask to send edits, um. But at the last meeting, I had provided feedback about. Not necessarily putting it in the policy that representative and non-represented always get the same, but that it become more of an um. When. Something new is adopted, it would specify. That, and so it's more of a um. An actual decision by the council each time. To identify that. So I don't know if that is.
The city administrator had asked um council to submit written comments to her uh on and to me. Uh, on that, I did not receive anything from council, so please go ahead and send that before the meeting.
Sorry, I didn't know if the verbal ones were um recorded, and now I understand that they weren't, so. Thank you.
I will send it. All right, um, now we'll move on to agenda bill twenty five dash zero eight, approval of the twenty twenty four transportation plan for discussion and our decision with Naomi Montes de Oca, our senior planner.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Uh, I don't have a PowerPoint tonight. This is just a request for. Um, adoption. Um, I. Can't through the tiny little camera, I don't see Larissa and I don't know if she has anything to add. There's her hand.
You can see her hair.
I see a teeny tiny little hand. Uh, so I uh come before you tonight um to ask on behalf of staff and uh public work, specifically Larissa has put a majority of the work into this uh document. Uh, uh, respectfully request uh that we adopt the twenty twenty four transportation plan this evening.
Uh, council like to make a motion, council member Mercer, or sorry, mayor, mayor for ten Mercer.
I need to approve agenda bill twenty five oh eight. And authorize the resolution adopting the twenty twenty four transportation plan.
Second.
So moving second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Councilmember Nelson, he didn't respond.
Oh, I thought I said aye.
I didn't see your mouth move over.
Okay, all right.
Said aye, okay, great, thank you. Um, motion passes, and with that, we'll move on to her side of the new business, agenda bill twenty five dash zero seven, um, park impact fee for discussion. And once again, we'll have Larissa Grindel, our city engineer. And thank you for being here, Naomi.
Yeah, thanks, Naomi, I appreciate it. Um, uh, good evening, council, uh, mayor, uh, chief. Larissa Grindel, public works. Um, so I have a power. Cool. Thank you. So, um, you can go to that side, but so just kind of a brief overview of how we got here today. Um, we contracted with SCS last year. To update our park impact fee to go along with the capital improvement plan project list from our adopted twenty twenty four BTOS plan. Um, so I had an updated list, um, that happened in January with the adoption. Um, and then we we brought it to council um for just some discussion in February. Um, so I'm I'm here to discuss more, should there be more discussion tonight, and then offer just some bulleted information. Um, next slide. So going over the funding plan, um, it's about seventy two uh million dollars for total project. So going over the funding plan, um, it's about seventy-two million dollars for total project cost for the entire uh, PTO S C I T. Um, of that, there's the breakdown of the eligible project cost. What we assume as having a ten percent grant match, match for those, um, projects. And then, uh, where we would need to find other funding to complete those projects. Um, and then just a note about the equivalent that we, um, that our consultant FCS, uh, helped us determine to get half the denominator of this map, which was four thousand five hundred and sixty-five, uh, residential equivalents. And that's both, um, the new people moving here and living here and, um, the commercial component. Next slide. Um, so the calculation for the non-residential portion was, um, is proposed to be, and this is the mass calculated. So the minimum would be, uh, one thousand dollars per one thousand square feet of, uh, commercial use basically. Um, and then the max would be, uh, if the use wasn't such that, uh, one point six five employees per one thousand feet, um, was relevant, like if it was a denser use, um, like a more people in an office. Um, we would use the per employee, um, rate to evaluate. Um, and then for residential, uh, the max uh, park impact fee per occupant was eleven thousand, just a little bit over eleven thousand dollars. We found through, uh, some data mining of, uh, building permits and such that our average dwelling unit size in the city of Duval is just over two thousand square feet. Um, based on census, um, OFM and other population data, we were able to get the average occupancy for dwelling to be three point zero eight. Um, so all the funny math, average occupancy per one thousand square feet is one point four three people. Uh, and that gets us to our you have to do math a couple ways to get there. But basically, you get a park impact fee per square foot residential of, uh, almost sixteen dollars. Next slide. So staff has recommended, um, adopting, um, for the council to make a decision, obviously, to adopt the calculated park impact fee at the set. Um, this is in line with, uh, previous methodologies and adoptions, uh, both in two thousand eight, when we did the methodology, uh, that I applied for the last PTO S. And then, um, where we updated in twenty seventeen to kind of right-size costs and adjust projects that were worked on the list. Um, and that with this fifty percent adopted park impact fee, we can still accomplish project goals projected over the next ten years. Um, because we have to come back in ten years and update our PTO S anyway. And we evaluate that capital, um, improvement plan project list again. Um, so this is that big beautiful list, so small. Um, next slide. And then I also have the maps in here that show, um, where those projects land. It's this, it's nails, uh, C I T project list or, um, now. And then I think that's it. But, yes, the next steps after discussion would be adoption of the park impact fee by ordinance. Um, and then, and I believe we might possibly have to wait until the adoption of the comprehensive plan to do that, but if not, um, uh, we would adopt never count, right? Do you have any questions?
Councilmember McNamara. I just want to say how much I like this approach of the square footage. There's a lot of talk about affordability. And, you know, a developer wants to, you know, after they pay all the fees, they're going to build the biggest house possible because it's the same fee, no matter what, typically. And so this potentially could incentivize, hey, if I build a smaller unit, I'll pay less fees potentially. I, I don't know, um, in practice, how much of an incentive that will be, but um, I very much like the approach. And I don't know if there's a movement towards this with any of the other impact fees. Um, anyway, yeah.
Yes, and it's because the legislation that was passed, um, you had to pick how you evaluate your impact fees. And so it's, it's, uh, based on trips, mostly for traffic impact fee, uh, bedroom. Um, I think unit type and then square footage. So, um, if you can't, it's, it's not just like based on necessarily a person, even though we use a person to get to the square footage.
Yeah.
So that's, that's kind of the idea between right sizing it between, um, multifamily, which is typically usually smaller, where we have our floor of seven oh two, seven hundred and two square feet.
Hmm.
And then, uh, the maximum that we would charge would be three thousand one hundred and twenty-four square feet, I think, if I remember right, just over three thousand square feet. So the average in there is about two thousand, um, that we have here.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. I hope we can get more modest sites home so that we can have some affordability that is not here.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Roland.
Fifty percent discount. There, or the recommendation to, to bill thirty percent. And here you have the figure three-three talks about, um, if we adopt a maximum defensible fee, we would be at ten thousand, which is above all the neighbors. Presumably, if we adopt a fifty percent, then we're kind of in the middle of that chart.
Yes, that's a great question. Um, that I do, I did go and look at a lot of those jurisdictions. And when FCS pulled those costs, um,
a lot of people are going through updating their parking pack already now. And a lot of those jurisdictions haven't done that work yet. So those are, those are old.
It's all old numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes, I don't know what they would be yet, but they're, they didn't do, but they haven't updated, um, with the new required legislation requirement of doing of calling it out as a per bedroom or square footage, um, or a specific unit type. So they haven't done that yet.
And I, I know council or Mayor Potem, uh, Mercer has a question, but since we have new folks that haven't been through the impact fee discussion for just to point of information is that, um, at least over the last decade or more, the city of Duval is really focused on trying to get, uh, the maximum impact fees, um, possible out of our development, maximum defensible. So that it funds more of that new infrastructure that's required, um, for those new residents, especially since we don't have the sales tax generation basis that other jurisdictions do. Um, wherever council decides to go, they decide to go. But I just wanted to make sure, uh, that I shared that information for those that haven't been through this. Uh, Mayor Potem.
Yeah, and my question sort of was a little, a little bit along those lines. I know when we discuss this, you know, some of the, the final recommendations from council kind of comes. It's a, it's a little bit dependent on what your, um, outcome you're driving toward. And I think we talked about sort of the maximum and the, and potential adverse impacts, but that now, you know, slowly development or not getting good development to actually fund the projects, going too low, obviously you, you to grow. So there's sort of a growth perspective versus you know, how do we right-size it? I guess maybe that's the right word to, to manage growth or, and or or promote a certain type of development as Councilmember McNamara alluded to, smaller homes. But still land the projects on the list. And, and so I just wanted to validate that assumption with you is that fifty percent recommendation is sort of, the, the, you know, because obviously sort of you maxed out and you slow growth, but then you also don't find parks for your existing residents. And, and so this sort of lands us somewhere in the middle. Is that a correct assumption?
Uh, yes, and yes. So the fifty percent gets us in that ten-year chunk of all of the projects that we.
Yes, yeah, not the whole of this, but.
Not just, well, the ten-year, yeah, because we actually had program out the majority of the projects that were, um, feasible, um, not really expensive, not having to go purchase a lot of land largely. We lose some things like that, that were in the, like the ten to twenty-year, um, part. So the fifty percent rate would still be able to cover that amount that is identified within that first ten years.
Yes, thank you for reminding me.
Yeah.
Really caught that after. Thank you.
My director, Larcheski.
And then maybe one thing to note, I know maybe everybody doesn't remember, but finance director McMinn, one of the charts she had showed her revenue uh, park and transportation impact fees. And you notice those were really low in the last few years and then it had been picking up. So we had several assumptions who were building public infrastructure that were getting credit against their fees. So that is gone. Now you are seeing and receiving those funds directly to the accounts instead of getting the credit for the work they did on site. So that is, that is increasing up against that assistance funding of capital, uh, projects. So that will be healthy, getting back healthier.
Councilmember McNamara?
Yeah, I'm just curious, when in the project do they pay the actual fee that building permit? When they're issued the building permit? Yes.
Okay, so yeah.
So we have a lot in the pipeline left then, um, or.
Well, rather than just pretty much about, um, Rio, this is, they'll, uh, towns one, four, three, then the newer, the, uh, the town home subdivision that's right above the first days, they haven't come in with any. Um, I want to save more than half of the sixty-five degrees, which is just on the other side of that, it built out. Uh, Duval Village is built out. Um, D R Horton in just up the street at the corner of one forty-third and third. There, uh, I want to say about a third of their permits. Then you have the little metal yard next to it. They have their twenties, digs twenty-seven lots. Um, so we're almost, wow, done. From what we have at base in the pipeline, Duval, smaller. Duval is done, except for the twenty-four units that are proposed, that are, they're proposed in their project scope right now, twenty-four, like one and two bedroom apartments above the commercial space for that commercial lot of Duval Village.
Hmm. Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Larissa? Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Shaper.
Uh, yeah, first, yeah, first a question, then probably follow a comment. But the question I have is a fifty percent evaluation. Does that mean fifty percent of the defensible amount, uh, so potentially we could go up to a hundred percent and that would still be defensible?
Um, no, the way the ordinance would be written would be that, um, it would be a dollar amount that's adopted. Because if you, you, um, so the funny thing about park, uh, about impact fees in, um, R C W is that the adopted fee that you have in your ordinance, you have to collect that unless it's outside of, uh, M O U or, uh, development agreement. Um, and if you do not collect that fee that you've adopted, um, you have, the, the city or the jurisdiction has to find the delta.
Okay, so what?
Has to find the delta. So whatever, so whatever the dollar amount is that is adopted by ordinance, whether it's a hundred percent of the calculated fee or it's fifty percent of the calculated fee, that is the fee.
So that's the, the fee, that, that is the fee a contractor would have to pay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, so my, my question is, why, why do we want to make it easy on contractors? Why do we want to give them a break? What's happening in Duval specifically with residential, uh, growth, it's not benefiting the city, uh, quite the opposite. Uh, it's, it's really, in my opinion, uh, harming the city. So why would we not charge them a higher fee, assuming it's defensible under the R C W? And, uh, my belief is we should do exactly that, that I go to the hundred percent fee. Again, but why, why do you think it's the right, I don't care what other cities are doing. Why do you think it's the right thing to do to give them a break on this fee? We should be collecting more.
I, I think one clarification is that they're bringing forth proposals from the council to discuss and make a decision on.
Yeah, and a, a little bit of context as well is that all the fees that the developers pay are passed on to the home buyer. So it doesn't, so the, the idea that we, uh, as a region are trying to make affordable housing, um, trying to make things more affordable and still have an end game of completing projects that benefit the growth and the development of the city and not making supportive of lesser impact fee, um, is why I, as staff, am recommending that fifty percent reduced value to council. But council obviously can.
Good to understand, uh, my, I guess, uh, comment is, uh, developers don't build affordable housing, quite the opposite. Uh, in fact, they're not incented to build affordable housing and we don't get affordable housing. Uh, we have, uh, a, a, my law is not here, but we have a hun- a handful of units that are, that are fall under affordable housing right now. The, in setting them with this, this fifty percent discount is not going to give us affordable housing here in Duval. So you know, unless we believe that, which, which we have no history, no data that supports that, why would we give them a break? Let's not give them a break. Let's charge them the full impact fee, the hundred percent.
Councilmember Henry.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think the way I've gone through my own evolution of thinking on these kinds of things. And I think where I'm at is the, the dots are a little more easily connected for us when we pass or increase a tax. And we know that we're directly causing more money to come from schools, you know, and that we're collecting that. When it's like an impact fee, even though we know it gets passed on, sometimes it's easy to think, well, these are just people moving in from out of the area and they're paying their fair share and that kind of thing. Um, one small example is when North Hill was built, um, a couple of my neighbors moved, you know, nice new houses and they moved up. So, um, a lot of the people moving that I knew were Duval people already. So, um, I, I think, you know, I'm comfortable with the recommendation. Um, I hear what you're saying and that frustration. And I think back to doing Waseli with Mayor Potem and we worked on affordable housing. And so this is a piece of it. It's not all of it. So I agree with what you're saying in that, you know, giving this discount isn't going to solve affordable housing. And so one of the things we had talked about in our program and working through our problem was that it to be brave and do several many small things, you know, like it wasn't just the one thing that was going to solve a problem. Uh, because if they were simple, we would have solved them by now. Um, but this is just one variable, one factor that contributes. So I think sometimes that's why it's hard to see a connection, um, because you're right. I mean, it's not going to suddenly make a, a house affordable. But it does, you know, put a drop in the bucket, right? And there's a lot of different things with the add cost, um. And this is one of them. So for me, that's why I'm comfortable with it, um, as long as we're achieving what we want to achieve and reflecting the money of what we can reasonably accomplish. I think that's the important thing. If we were shorting ourselves or cutting it too close, um, I would agree, we should push it up, but it sounds like we have a solid body of work that we could accomplish. And I, I think this is reasonable.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. All right, I'm going to go around and see if others, or I'm sorry, I, I still don't do that. It was, you're mayor for him for a few years. Um, so Councilmember McNamara, we've heard from you for a couple of times. We haven't heard from Councilmember Supple or Kupel, so I want to give.
I want to add to this. I'm just kind of waiting for when the agenda bill comes out.
And then, uh, Councilmember Kupel.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason it makes sense to me because it's, um, adjusting for lighting scales and the size of, and the footprints of the, of the houses. So it's not it's going to be capped certain levels. And I think the report does a good job in pages seven through ten of explaining the thing. And it's pretty concise.
Um, Councilmember McNamara, you'll be the last comment.
Yeah, so I'm thinking about what you said, that, you know, even if you reduce fees, you aren't going to necessarily get an affordable unit. And I started thinking about it. You know, some of the smaller units that we have built in the city, they're still luxury, you know, market rate. Um, so is there a possibility, and we talked about, you know, having this carrot or something for actual true affordable homes, you know, that might be in the hundred or eighty percent. Um, is it possible to charge market rate homes according to the hundred percent fee and give a discount if there are building actual affordable to be the fifty percent? So that would really potentially incentivize. So I would say absolutely.
And that usually comes in the form of a development agreement. And you adopting a impact fee at what rate you adopted at, whether it's a hundred or fifty, and then you can reduce that adopted fee amount based on affordability, because that's what we did with the Hill Brothers units.
Was, uh, we specified the affordable units and what the discount was and what the, um, affordable percentage that they had to be at. Sorry, I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, I am a lawyer and, uh, throw out there that in addition to, um, development agreements, there are provisions in state law that, uh, do allow, uh, local governments to provide a discount, uh, for, um, uh, housing that meets affordability criteria. It's, it's specified in the statute. And so, so. It's, it's specified in the statute and so, so that's an option that is available to the city even if, um, even if it doesn't choose to use a development agreement. And then I wanted to just chime in on one other thing, because this is an area where, whether it's fifty percent or some other percent, there is a range of, uh, flexibility for council to find what it considers to be the sweet spot. Um, but there's also a provision in state law that talks about how, um, uh, the financing for system improvements to serve new development must provide for a balance between impact fees and other sources of public funds and cannot rely solely on impact fees. And so I would just send out maybe a little bit of a warning about the one hundred percent, um, number, um, uh, but also encourage the council to explore their options. And that's one of the reasons why the ordinance in the agenda packet doesn't actually, uh, specify the rate, because we thought, um, council would want to, um, to, to, to have discussion about that. So, thank you.
And a quick touch on that, Oscar, thanks for chiming in, um.
Well, I'm not the only one that does that. It was really good. Well, Steve is sicky, but I still got one more comment.
Well, we're, we're down to talk from council at this point, so it's, um, Steve, if you think about it, we can, um, chime in or send council.
Are we done with comments from council?
We, we've gone around a few minutes.
Well, I spoke once, I spoke once.
Council, it's your call. Oh, you want to continue the conversation or move on to the next agenda item, since this is not a decision point at this point?
Yeah, I, I don't see a point.
Um, okay, you can, if you have not spoken twice, you may speak twice, but we've had a council member speak at least four times. So we'll, we'll cut it off at that and then we'll let Director Lynn Schuss make a comment.
But yeah, kind of to your point, Oscar, the defensibility, just because it's defensible at a hundred percent doesn't mean you can't get challenged and engaged in activities that are, um, doing, uh, like spend. Nothing can stop them from, them, the development key from doing that. So again, try to make it as reasonable but defensible and funding forward as possible.
And do you, you need to ask, okay, perfect. All right, now.
Before we go on, we've heard from one council member, Mary. Does the rest of the council think I should quit? Or can I add my one more comment?
He has a minute to say.
Okay. Go ahead and pick your button.
Yeah, I think you should go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my, my one more comment is, first of all, as far as people moving from Duval, uh, into Duval, small percentage, most people are moving from outside of Duval into Duval. Uh, keep in mind who we represent. We don't represent those people. We represent the current residents, residents of Duval. That's who we owe our allegiance to, uh, not people that may be moving here in the future. And that's what my feeling, uh, is. Uh, okay.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-five dash twenty-two. We have a resolution for acre of diamonds per discussion and decision with City Administrator McNabb. If there is a council member that is feeling very confident on this and would like to make a motion, we'd be happy. Oh, you don't want a decision on it then?
No. Not yet. Okay, all right. Um, you have an agenda bill in your packet kind of describing, uh, Director Thomas put together describing, um, what the request is, what the fees will be and the information summary. One thing that she wanted to point out that we think will be important as you consider this moving forward and what we're looking for tonight is kind of a heading on of, if you would like us to move forward and bring it to the consent agenda for the next meeting. The proposed, um, plan for this is to do it in phases. So you would definitely clear two acres of diamonds three times. Cause there are three sets of fees that are related to this project. So the first, which would be the initial waiver is about thirty-five thousand dollars for the first inspection fees. Let's see what's captured in the first, planning, building and engineering. So that's about thirty-five thousand. This second phase is the building and inspection fees, which is, we haven't calculated those yet, we'll do so at a future date when they get to that part of the project. And, uh, you would potentially then vote again to waive that set of fees. The third set of fees is the end, which are the connection fees and impact fees. On those, we are going to have to do for the phase three fees, some legal review, because potentially on the connection fees, we would have to pay ourselves back. So it's not just a waiver, it's we would have to write out of our own money to pay ourselves back. And so that's why we're taking the approach we are taking is to do them in phase sections. So council can understand what exactly you're waiving and the amount of each phase. So at this point, um, I would ask for kind of council feedback on, do you want me to bring back just a phase one fee waiver for the consent agenda next week? Or do you want us to do the work of doing all three phases? In which case it might take a couple of council meetings and we'll delay the part. Just want to be transparent about that.
Councilmember Mary, then Natalie.
I would say it sounds like just bring back the first phase so that they can get going on stuff and then that gives more time to roll it out fully.
Councilmember Natalie?
I'd like to bring back the first phase as quickly as we can, just so they can move on with their project, but then also follow it up with phase two or three, so they have some kind of an idea as they're budgeting of where we're headed. And, um, uh, in addition to that, I, when you do your research on the legal side, I would like to know if we could use the affordable, is it sales tax?
That bucket of money we haven't put a policy on yet.
Yeah, so if that is a possibility, to use that.
Okay, cause I would be very interested to find out.
The other councilmembers, Councilmember Supple and then Owen.
Yeah, I don't have the affection for waiving it, but, um, for phase one, but I'm just curious, what exactly is the land use entitlement instruction review? What does that entail? For the speed.
We're gonna have to have.
I can.
Oh, you can.
So the land entitlement process is getting a site plan review approval. And right now it's a type three permit and it goes to the hearing examiner. So it goes through rounds of review with, uh, the development review committee, which is, uh, Public Works, um, planning and building. We make comments, we make everything perfect as, as we can to fall in line with code, write a big staff report, give it to the hearing examiner, they get their land entitlement. So that, so basically it's our hourly, um, charge for. For that process, yeah. And it's, and it's, and then there's construction drawing review approval, which is separate outside of the land entitlement process. So it's just basically staff time.
Then inspections.
That's part of the, that's part of the second phase that, um, City Administrator McNabb is talking about. That's part of the building permit. So, yeah, inspections don't come till later.
Um, Councilmember Owen and then Mayor Person.
I just want to clarify this. It doesn't, um, preclude, they, they wouldn't not. Grant the waivers, correct? They don't move forward regardless, or is that not true?
Um, so what I understand is that the initial, so they cannot get out of permitting right now without paying the thirty-five thousand dollars. So they're a little stuck. And so what they would like is a fee waiver now, so they can go to their funders and get their project started. Cause if they don't pay the thirty-five thousand, we're just kind of waiting and look about.
Yeah, for something that may or may not happen. Okay.
Well, I mean, I think they're, they're very motivated.
Mayor Person?
Yeah, and that was sort of more along the lines of, I think, you know, we've done this process before, so there's sort of rhythm. I think we indicated it wasn't just sort of a prerequisite or assumption we're going through an exercise. I do think it's helpful to have, you know, not a specific, but sort of a, uh, a T-shirt sizing of what that means in terms of the, 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 the waiver represents, as we deliberate, even though I know it's staff time, that's real time. You know, that, that's being allocated toward other things, but I think that helps inform the decision. But I, I sort of just wanted to weigh out, you sort of agree with the approach, so let's get them going, uh, you know, with the quickest possible and then, then we take things from here.
Seems like there's consensus on that first part, so, um, Councilmember Schaefer, if you'd like to make a comment.
Did, did you?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, let's see, first of all, I love the act of doing this in phases. Uh, I've, I've spoken about acres of diamonds before, who was like, you know, here, I think it's one of the finest, uh, uh, charities we have in the city, uh, primarily because of Cooper benefits, both moms and kids. Uh, also because of the process they do before they actually allow lesson to, to make sure they're drawn free and, and out all breed and that, that type of thing. And the result has been a huge, uh, success, success as far as how they're, uh, integrated and suc- success also of the end result as far as getting, getting the mothers and families back.
Great. Thank you, I think, can I have direction? And, uh, we'll put some in together for next.
Um, so next on our agenda, we have a float session under R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one four zero sub four sub A. I had a quick question for our city attorney, um, since we have an executive session quickly immediately following. Uh, can we, uh, just notify the clerk when we move from one to another, Oscar? Or do we need to go back upstairs?
Oops, sorry, uh, I, I think, I think you should, um, I think you can treat the two sessions as a single executive session and, um, and when you're done with one, let the clerk know, but you don't have to come upstairs and then you can adjourn at the end of the, um, executive session as opposed to the closed session and just adjourn for the evening.
Perfect, thank you, that'll save a few minutes. Um, so then we will also, uh, adjourn for executive session under R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero sub one sub B. And how much time were you estimating, City Administrator? For both? Yes. Uh, let's go twenty minutes? Twenty minutes, um, and then if we, uh, go beyond twenty minutes, we will let the clerk know, uh, and go. After the executive session, so those members of the public are welcome to go on their merry night.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's actually, uh, yeah. Fred.
And, um, Councilor Patty?
Right away.
Um, the Duval City Council has returned from executive session and closed session at eight to two P M.